Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 19th, 2017 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Could we all stand in for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
What's this? What issue is this? Okay, opening comments, Mr. Lombard.
I have nothing, I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
My condolences to the Taylor family. Ken Taylor passed, sad thing. He was my relative, but he also was a full-time Nahana, and he'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
Okay, and my sentiment also, Huck was a great guy. I knew his father, I knew T's father, and it was a close knit group. Huck was one of a kind. He was a special forces man, and you'd never know it. So, he was just a great guy, and we'll miss him. And that's it. So, we have some minutes that we need to accept. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the prior minutes of 10:05, 17, and executive minutes of 9:27, 17.
So move.
Second. Okay. The, I will vote to approve the minutes of the open meeting, but the executive minutes contain nothing. So, I have them, it was a two and a half hour meeting, and there's really nothing in there, so I won't, I'll vote nay on the executive minutes.
What?
There's a need to find a file.
Yeah, those were sent out electronically and requested that if you had comments in advance, it would be beneficial so she could be changed the minutes, so you don't have a hard copy here.
Oh, gotcha.
Why don't we just table those and just vote for the...
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we accept the open meeting minutes and table the executive session minutes.
I rescind the first motion.
Oh, rescind, okay. Will we rescind the first motion?
Yes.
All right, I'll second that. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries?
Yep. I make a motion, we accept October 15th open meeting minutes.
Say it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We have the citizens forum at this point, so if there's anybody out there that wants to get up and speak, feel free. Okay. Don't be afraid. Hearing none, okay. Housing Authority this session. We have Mickey Long and I think David Wilson here to come up and speak on it. Would you like to come up and give us an update on what's going on down there?
No.
No, okay, okay. You don't want to give us an update on what kind of progress is being done there? You have an elevator going in?
Sit right here, Nikki. I saw housing was on the agenda, so I thought I'd come. I also saw an email from Jeff Chelgren, hoping somebody would come, so I thought I'd come. So, I didn't, I don't have any prepared remarks or anything, but if they're...
I mean, I'd like to have, I mean, I see work being done, and you've got his rant. Can you give us an update on what's happening there?
Yeah, okay, so I'm not here for this, for the authority. I, in fact, they don't want me to be representing the authority here. So, I am a commissioner, I can answer any questions that I know of for you, and my understanding is construction of the elevator has begun, as well as a lot of upgrades to non-compliance issues that have been, quite frankly, plaguing the building since, according to the reports, since 1982. So, it's a lot of exciting things. We thought it was going to be about a million dollars, but it's so far up to almost 1.6. And the way construction is today, I wouldn't be surprised to see that narrowing $2 million as much needed improvements. The biggest construction project that the authority has ever taken on, I understand, so we're somewhat excited. Obviously, some residents are going to be displaced because of parking temporarily, but we hope to have it done by the first of the year. We started signing the contract and...
So, the elevator's going on the outside of the building? What about Greystone Road? Can we, possibly get something done about that? The, there's a couple of empty dwellings there, or one?
Yeah, again, you and I have talked about this. There's a, I don't, I don't want anybody to think my remarks are on behalf of the authority.
No, that's, that's fine, okay, so can we get that...
As much as I'd like to get things out at Greystone Road to make it look a lot better, it takes money, like I've expressed to you before.
Do you think we could get a statement from the, could you ask the committee to give a statement to us?
I don't mind asking, and it's not my sense that...
Did you invite the chairman?
Yes, she was invited, and she said that David and you will be showing up today. So, that's where we got that information.
So, yeah, it's, I, that's, there was a committee meeting where it was discussed that you guys, again, invited the committee. I remember we had met one time in executive session, and it wasn't a desire of the committee as a whole to do that.
I guess the question I have, how can we help you? Can we help you with the...
Absolutely, yeah. That's, that's exactly why I'm here, Rich, because I, I think...
We get the superintendent of Public Works there, too. I mean, he needs some help. We authorized the parking on the highway.
Right, yeah, I heard that.
You know, on Greystone Road as well. Park a X segment, so, that's what I was...
Yeah, what about the guestimate, the time? How much longer, how long do you think it will take?
Again, the first of the year, I think, by Christmas, but it's, you have been in construction 40 years. If, if it's before Christmas, I'm going to be ecstatic.
It's going to be a warm winter, so you've got plenty of time.
Yeah, I'm hoping that as well. I just saw that news today, Rich, that's true, yeah.
I just happened to catch that.
From my state of mind, I say to myself, if it is not done by the mid-January, I'm going to be concerned. I think the contract provides for a six-month opportunity, but they said they can be in and out of there quickly. My sense is they will be given, that there's so much construction, a lot of contractors want to move on to other projects, get these complete.
I noticed the housing authorities, housing authorities across the state have a lot of work, so these guys, these guys are right in that housing authority structure, so they're gonna, you know, they're working on other projects, you know?
Right, and they want to have a good track record, because...
Oh, yeah, and they do, they do have a good track record.
Right, yeah, so...
I guess, I guess that's, T, do you have anything?
So, no, to answer, you know, Ms. Lombard's question, I, I don't know what you can do. I wish you can do anything you can to, essentially, for folks should know that the state dictates every nickel that we spend. They approve budgets, we do not have enough money from rents to pay for the maintenance or the full-time administration. The, the state will not allow us to hire a full-time maintenance person, so we have a part-time maintenance person who is new. The previous one, employment terminated, so all the folks who talk to me about this new fellow, really like the fellow, he's doing a fantastic job, and he's got a huge backlog. So, that's why, given a host of things that occurred over the past 15 months, most of which you know about, you know, that there are some things that lag behind, and you're seeing the aesthetic consequences. So, we also have a part-time director, so you don't have any full-time folks, it makes it difficult. So, if DPW or anybody, quite frankly, we, Dave Wilson just coordinated a volunteer group to do some painting after, after the construction, or pretty, actually, it might even be this month that they're coming in from his group, which I really appreciate Dave Wilson doing that. And we have all the unanimous sponsors who are, after the construction, are willing to help redecorate some areas and pitch in, but if so, folks can pitch in, you know, we're all ears. We have, we have had donations going in. If anybody wants to make a donation, they can just write a check to the Nahana Housing Authority. So, if DPW can coordinate, if that's the suggestion I'm hearing, so that they can take care of it, I know, I know the regulations have changed some time ago, I'm told, suggesting or informing residents that they do not, and probably ought not, be taking care of the places, like folks, remember, folks in the past did. You know, they haven't changed under the time, I've been there for 15, 24 months or so, but the authorities have mandated that the authorities must take care of those grounds, but, and again, it's an unfunded mandate, so unless you can afford to hire somebody or group volunteers to come in, we're lucky to have the garden club folks come in and do some volunteering, that's how it gets done.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think maybe, we still got the part-time as Dennis? Two left, yeah.
So, Richie, what I may suggest is that I'll have Donna and Dennis talk and see what they could possibly do, and then come back and...
Well, my biggest, I think that, from looking on the onset, the grounds need to be cleaned up. I'm just, you know, I just...
Yeah, everybody's had a brainwash.
And the barrels and the trash need to be put on the side instead, because the housing units, they look, you know, they just, it's not a big project, it just, if we have some, too bad we couldn't hire the part-time kids for the summer kids, come on, just, you take each unit, clean it up a little bit, and just, you know, maintain it a little bit better. And the residents, too, I mean, I would think, you have one person that lives in the end unit on Greystone Road, she's out there planting flowers, and she, her area looks really nice, you know, that one area, I mean, the other people just like, it's like, I would think that, you know, with the rents they're paying, pride would be a, you know, their pride to clean up their area a little...
I think discussions like that, yeah, I think discussions like this help.
I just, I just, you know, I think if we could, the problem, we don't have manpower, we're shot. One guy at Public Works already, and if, we should have thought of this during the summer, when we have the summer help, we could, you know, get it cleaned up for the winter. But, because during, when the trash is being, it's just, it's just, we're picking up, you know, I mean, the trash that's in the street, we have a guy go around, clean that up already, you know, so, but we need to look at that.
But, you know, the authorities got limited power in being able to put pressure on...
Well, I didn't realize the Board of Selectmen are involved, involved with the housing authority.
Richie, I disagree with that, Mickey, all right? I have Suzanne Bump's audit report here.
Is this the report?
To me, it's kind of shameful to the town. You've got Greystone Road, which is still in Zassa, and we've asked to get that cleaned up. You've got an open apartment for two years now.
I didn't see that in Suzanne Bump's report.
It doesn't matter, it's still open, and I'm surprised, I'm surprised they haven't done that. The authority did not always promptly complete maintenance work requested by tenants. I mean, there's, there's a bunch of things in here. So, you're telling me that the state is telling you that you have to get it done without any money?
Okay, you're mixing the aesthetic quality of that road with the...
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the building itself, when somebody trips and falls, or if there's, there's an apartment that's open that should be rented. I mean, the housing authority is responsible for that, somebody's responsible for it, we just can't...
Yeah, so...
I get complaints on, almost on a daily basis, daily basis about it.
So, the state auditor is a state agency, and the, I found the report to be extremely helpful.
Yep.
I don't, I think without the report, we would not have been able to negotiate the extensive renovations that we're going to get. So, I was glad when I saw a report that I could easily look to the state and say, here's the auditor, a state agency, telling the DHCD, the Department of Housing in the state, that you've got to start paying for some of these repairs because it's unacceptable. And they did, so it was, it was helpful. Much of the report notably regards a timeframe prior to my coming on the board, in fact, all of it. There were, actually, there were two instances with the Attorney General, I investigated and found no violation, but two years ago or so, I think it's June of 2015, when you appointed me to the board, police were escorting women in wheelchairs out of public meetings. Public meetings didn't have any participation, the line item was writing up things, it was the lawsuit that was pending, there was general tenor of discontent. Fast forward 24 months later, the report comes out, extensive investigation by the state, it finds what it finds, conveniently, it was timely, and it manifested in being able to be where we are. So, a whole, the lawsuit settled, the public meetings are as healthy as I can imagine a public meeting can be, with public participation and dialogue, and a host of other things that we did, corrective action. That report that, as I was talking about, was issued over a year ago, so obviously, we worked on all of them, and things are much better. Now, of course, if you're driving by some sites and they're unsightly, you don't see the other stuff that's been going on in the past 24 months, and I understand that, but we've been working on volunteer efforts to help out, for doing things, so I think that's the best way to fix the problem, because you can complain about the problem, but if there's no money to fix it, that's all that's going to happen, is we're going to heat blood, whereas if folks do what the garden club has done for the housing community, what Dave Wilson and his folks at the Knights of Columbus, I believe, are going to do, what others who want to remain anonymous intend to do, then I think that's the productive way to get it done.
How do we, so how do we squeeze money out of them? Because this report, it sounds like there's a missing link there. I mean, you got a report from the Suzanne Bump's office, who's the state auditor, and saying that it's, it wasn't a very good report, it's, it's public information, so I think anybody can get it online.
It is.
But, yet, they don't want to give you any money to, I mean, there's a, I think there's a couple of units that still aren't opening up yet.
Yeah, so, I want to be a little careful of criticizing somebody who's just given me $1.5 million, the biggest amount of money that the place ever got in its history, so I understand that you want more, I do too. I don't like a lot of the regs and rules and procedures that we have to follow, I'm, I'm with you, if you want to change them. I think your question is more, better directed, but I don't want to tell you what to do to the state legislators, whether it's a state rep and a senators, to say, look, there's a small supply of housing, there's a huge need for funding, and a lot of it's getting cut, so I don't want to make a pitch for funding, but the fixes you want require some money, and DHCD is probably looking at other cities and towns now that they've allocated over $1.5 million here. So, I, I don't know what is going to happen between now and the first time you need some grass cut, but I think it's important, folks who care about it, open dialogue, like you just did, to say, you know, if there's one person taking care of a place, it looks great. So, we're limiting what we can do to that, especially since it's our obligation by statute to cut the lawn, but if you don't have the money, the time, if the individual is doing a great job, can only work part-time, and that's by, by rule of the state.
No, see, I guess...
He's only got so much time to...
I just want to clarify, I mean, I don't understand, you're saying that this, this report is saying all these bad things, and it, but yet, the state doesn't, the state doesn't want to give us any money to fix that, that one particular apartment, I think it's $10,000 bucks or 20, I forget what, what the figure was on it. It's been a couple of years, there's wires hanging off the building, people just don't like to see it. So, my question is, how do we get, who do, you said the legislature. I suppose we can pressure some of the politicians, say, look, you know, we need some money to fix the place.
Yeah, I don't think they're not giving us money.
We need to get that, we need to get that place up and running.
Yeah.
And looking for the way it should be for the town now, period.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. Are you talking about a specific unit?
The unit that's been open for two or three years.
Yeah, there are compliance issues with some of, one or two units that are left, as the report pointed out. There were no funding with a lot of the units that were left vacant over the requisite timeframe, but now that the funding came through, most of those, if not nearly all of them, are, are online.
Funding for...
Anytime you have a tran, a turnover in tenancy, there's an inspection, they check to see compliance issues, if there's any fixes that need to be done, forms, paperwork to the state approvals, but I think, I, my understanding is that process has been going underway, so if you have something...
Have they held anybody accountable for that? I mean, if it's $20,000 worth of damage to a, a unit, that's an awful lot of money.
Yeah, I, see, we don't, like a school committee or a select board that rely on the day-to-day affairs of the thing, we rely on the day-to-day affairs of the director, so I'm sort of, I'm somewhat winging it. These are questions that would best be asked, if you were to attend a housing committee meeting, spoke, you know, with the director, give a heads up as to what you had a concern on, and my understanding, I, we invited you guys to come to the housing committee a couple of times, and for whatever reason, you chose not to, and no, no offense taken, but, so I can't answer those questions, I'm not, I leave the causeway for 10, 12 hours.
I'll go to your next meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I think, yeah, well, I, I think we'll be remiss if we don't step up to the plate as the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, that lawsuit that we're got involved in, I found out the board was more responsible, responsible for more than just being set on the side. I think what we need to do is get together with the housing authority, make up a wish list, so to speak, and all of us, and, and then sit down and see what we can do, and where we can help, and what we can do to move things along.
Yeah.
And set up a series of meetings with Tommy McGee and Brendan Crichton, and then go in and meet with the state agency, too, on behalf, you know. And then one of the suggestions I would have with you is have a joint meeting with all the tenants up here in the town hall. I think we could afford a coffee, right, Jeff?
We can.
I mean, if we can, I think Angela will pay for it.
Okay.
But, invite them all up, not a manager in meeting, just a volunteer, just to talk about pride and their area, and maybe they could, because a lot of these people that are living in those, they're capable of doing things, I mean, just, and, and that everyone's watching, and if they could volunteer and, and help, and then go on the outskirts, and maybe have the contractors in time, in the town, meet with them, and see if we can get some other volunteers to attack our problems, you know, bit by bit, so that we reach our goal of cleaning up the area, because it's, it's just, it just, it's, it seems like it should be cleaned up. It's a disgrace the way it is between you and I, and I, you see it, and then, you know, Dennis has got people picking up papers, but, and I think we need to put this on a fast track, Jeff, okay, and get this going, and get everyone involved, and then we'll meet with the state representatives and say, listen, we need this and this, but we've got to write it up. Have town council draft up a letter, taking this audit report, and find out exactly who we have to write to, and say, listen, you set the state auditor around, they come up with this three-page document, a four-page document about the shortcomings, and then, okay, and then it seems like everything's in neutral, no one's really taking the initiative to move forward. We need to take that the next step.
I, I hope I can stop there, I need, we got this report, like I said, I looked at it from a positive angle, and we immediately implemented changes, and the entire report, I believe, has been complied with, you know, long months ago. So, I, I think the reports are separate issues than that, than the unsightliness that you and other folks in town, I, I'm happy to hear, I shouldn't say happy to hear, but I'm glad folks are expressing concern, because I think this type of dialogue gets everybody to say, hey, well, how can we pitch in? I like your ideas, Rich, on all of it.
No, I just, but I'm very surprised, I'll be honest with you, having empty units, because I know, I don't know how many people this past year has, have asked me personally to, they need help, okay? For whatever reason, they, kids, and they're involved, and they just, you know, they're, they don't, they're almost homeless, okay?
So, you mean, folks who need housing?
Yeah, and, and we need, I mean, we need to get these, these units, whatever it takes to get it fixed, or, you know, get it, get people in there that need help. That's what my, my, the end result is that.
And safety, safety also, I mean, you see wires hanging, I was concerned about the wire hanging from the building, if you get on, after you leave Ed's house, you must see the wires hanging from that place, you know?
Yes, I do.
And you've got to get people in there, I mean, you've got to have...
Well, we, we should have the, have you, have we...
The left wing inspector went over there.
Did he write it up and do something about it?
Their cable TV wires, but still, it's still a safety issue, I think.
I mean, we should send the inspectors over there, just to check everything, see what they can do, and then, all right?
One of the issues with that is we have to be invited into the facility. If we could get an invitation, I've been asking Donna to allow us in.
Wait, wait a minute, I, I didn't think, I thought the housing authority was a separate authority.
Right, it is.
And then, and then all of a sudden, this lawsuit that we've got pending...
No, I thought it settled.
Well, I, I don't know where that is, but it came up in the lawsuit, but the Board of Selectmen were responsible, am I correct?
Yeah.
No, 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 I'm not the allegation, but I, the, the Board of Selectmen were the ultimate responsibility of the housing authority, I, I...
Yeah, I don't think that's what it said.
Did I miss that?
That's what you told us in downstairs.
You, that's what you said, and the insurance lawyers.
Same thing.
Yeah, that's not what I heard.
Because I thought, I thought they're a total independent, they're elected body on the highway, it's like the school committee, we couldn't, you know, we don't, okay?
Exactly.
We, we don't go over to the school committee, tell them how to run their business. I thought that was the same thing for the housing authority, but when this lawsuit came up, the attorneys, I remember sitting there, suggested that the Board of Selectmen were ultimately responsible.
Yeah, that's not, if I can, I was in a room, I didn't hear that. I did hear the attorneys explain to you that someone alleged some of that stuff. The fact that they allege it doesn't mean it's so.
Let me, let me, let me start there.
Hold on a minute. Can we have that straightened out, Dan? Can you go back and go through the minutes, because, you know, I remember that meeting, those, those attorneys, there was four attorneys in that room.
Okay.
I remember the part where he said, "The ultimate responsibility lies in the Board of Selectmen."
But, but it was also that the Board of Selectmen should have been aware, because they are the governing body of the town.
We still, we still haven't heard from any one of those attorneys, number one. Number two, we are responsible for it, because, am I right? Did we buy the annuity? Who bought the annuity, Jeff?
We bought the annuity under the court order.
And you're not, you weren't supposed to buy the annuity. The town in the heart was not supposed to buy...
Yes, yes, we were.
No, no, you're dead wrong, you're dead wrong, I have the minutes, I have the minutes, Jeff, and that, and that's going to, I'm going to tell you something right now, that's, that's not going to bode very well.
Well, council's here to speak to that, if you'd like.
No, he's not going to speak about it. The minutes have been accepted, the minutes are the minutes, and that's the end of it. You weren't supposed to buy a $100,000 annuity, and that's the end of it.
I would disagree.
You have not let us be aware of any of this, what's going on, number one.
I would disagree.
I'm not finished, Richie. You have not let us be aware of any of this that's going on, you haven't, and the other attorneys, the other attorneys, what I heard from the other attorneys was, why weren't the Board of Selectmen involved? Can you, can you answer that, please? Why, why didn't Pagnini say, why weren't the Board of Selectmen involved in this?
There were two executive session meetings, at which time you gave authorization for the full actions to take place, and in that included...
Very, very, and, and you know something, Jeff? I was really, I didn't want to do it, okay? So, then we had another executive session meeting where we accepted, we rescinded that vote, and we said that we are not going to... and we said that we are not gonna have anything to do with the housing authority's problems as far as... I have the minutes, Jeff. Would you like to see them? The accepted minutes? But the Board of Selectmen...
I've seen the minutes, and at the time that you accepted the minutes, I expressed my sense that they varied from the reality of what happened at the meeting.
You weren't even here, Jeff. You were over there. No, you were over there, Jeff. You were out in the hallway.
Dan is here, 'cause Dan...
Well, you know something? I don't care. The three Board of Selectmen members voted on it, and that's the end of it. That's the end of the story, okay? We voted on it, we told you not to do it, and you did it. Okay? The bottom line is, we don't, the town, you're putting the town at risk, as far as I'm concerned, when you do stuff like that. We don't want anything to do with it.
I disagree with all of that.
Well, you can disagree with whatever you want. I'm just telling you how we felt about it, Jeff.
Okay.
Okay?
And I'm just telling you, I disagree. No, I disagree.
You also have your help, your workers up here, your department heads didn't want to do it, did they?
I disagree with what you're alleging.
I don't, I'm not alleging anything, Jeff. I'm telling you reality. I called the woman from, from Liberty Life. She told me that the Town of the Heart owns that annuity. And we have...
I, I really, you know, that's a discussion that we need to get into on a separate thing, but I just wanna see how we could help and clean up the place. The ultimate goal, do you understand?
Yeah.
If, if we need to get volunteers organized.
Right, the lawsuit is long gone and settled, and the construction has just begun. That took months and a go...
Yeah.
Things are looking so well. I, it's sort of, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of past stuff begin to be reopened for whatever reason. And folks have the right to do that. I don't know how it's healthy for folks, but they certainly have the right to do that. But I think the healthy thing is what you just said.
Yeah.
Let's carry on once this construction gets done in January.
On the donations, if we were to give, if there were to be donations, are there state restrictions on how they're to be used for that?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. I asked that question about a year ago, and apparently you can make it a donation, anybody can just write a check. I did it, my wife and I, to the Heart Housing Authority in whatever amount you'd like. And the state will not use that against the authority in the budgeting process, so it will be in addition to...
You, you're controlling it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It'll go right to, so the, so the housing authority can already collect. According to my questions...
That may be an avenue while we're doing our...
Great idea, too, yeah, you know, I, I just think...
Attack of the select, of the senators and senators.
We need to get all these ideas down.
Like you say, get us together and throw ideas together.
Right, and now another thing that happened recently that, I'll just, there are five seats, one's by the state, Paul Smith. And four used to be voted on by the town. Now one, as of last year, the statute changed, and one has to come from the tenants themselves. So you're gonna have three town seats, one tenant seat, and one state-appointed seat.
So there'll be five, just five?
There'll always be five, in stagger terms, so that not anybody, but it's, you know, I think a tenant... I, I didn't know that the legislature changed it. When I found out, I thought it was a healthy change, that a tenant rep has to be one of these seats. So it go, it lends well to a contact or liaison to the tenants, because there is no tenants' association currently at the housing authority, though the tenants can enact one, and I wish they would at any time.
So the, to the board, Mickey, do you envision us meeting in November and moving this along?
Well, I think we need to get a, a plan together with the housing authority.
Yep.
You know, a five-year plan, and find out exactly how much money we need from the state to move this forward, along with the volunteers and everything else.
Yep.
You need, you need a plan, and it's gotta be budgeted and everything else, and then you have a responsibility if there's donations for people, because people, you know, the beautification committee.
Right.
Okay?
We just started one. Last month, Dave Wilson and I are on it.
Yeah.
There's, there's, I think about forty, thirty or forty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act. However, Community Preservation Committee, to their credit, will make sure that it's not for maintenance, so it has to be for preservation. And I think it could be a nice progression with that. So like I said, the timing is perfect, perfect, given what's gonna happen over the next couple of months there.
That was, that was my next question, the CPC, that, that's a great move.
Right.
Will they, I would give it as preservation and not maintenance.
Well, it would have to be a preservation project, and these folks are pretty experienced with these things. I just decided to sit on that committee, and they're very helpful with how to guide us for that.
Take priority over all the other. Well, we can't solve it all tonight.
No, it's a start.
Basically, I wanted the report.
Retab it, retab it and reschedule, you know, the meeting, and hopefully more members will show up from the housing authority, so... I would get a, I would get a joint meeting with the board. It doesn't have to be a Thursday night, but it may be an off night or late afternoon or early morning, and then I'd definitely invite all the tenants up for a meeting, a coffee. Give them a little, I wanna use the word, you know, old pride, to shout their out, just to see...
A lot of them have pride, pride.
Yeah, I just, you know, the barrels have to be picked up and moved out of the street. I mean, they're just blown away.
I think that would encourage a spirit of pride that we should all be encouraging. I, I like the idea. I hope we...
Should, should we think about meeting over at the housing authority?
Again, it's so easy to think that I'm here on behalf of the authority. I am not. And if somebody in the authority says, Mickey, I can't believe you said something, please allow them to say that.
No, I know, I know, you, you came up for something else, and David Wilson, he ran for his life, that's all right.
Yeah, and he's doing a great job. I mean, thank God, he's got volunteers coming down. Okay, okay, great. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, Mickey.
Thanks, Mickey. All right.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move the next people to come up. I'm gonna move, do a little switch. I'm gonna have Waste Management come up.
Thank you for joining us, Jim. We really appreciate it. If you could introduce yourself.
Sure. Jim Nacella from Waste Management.
Okay, first, the reason why I asked you here is we seem to be having some problems with, and I, I hear them all the time, and you know, maybe, and I tell them to call the town hall. And you know something, I'm gonna give you a complaint. I own a garage on Spring Road, and twice, they've missed me, and my trash is out at six o'clock in the morning. It's not very hard to miss either. It's right, it's right there. Now, the kid that does the trash on Spring Road on Thursday is a very hard worker, and he's a good guy. But you get one guy, he has to get out of the truck, and he has to empty the trash, and then get back in the truck and go. You get one guy doing the trash for the whole, for the whole, that whole side of the town. That to me, and, and they're missing stuff. He's missing stuff because he, he's really beside himself. He's working extra hard. Can you give us a reason why you went, you cut down to one, one person?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, we went to a two-day collection.
Okay.
We separated the routes, and that's very common practice. Wouldn't ask anybody to do anything that I didn't do, and I did that for years, working a one-man truck when trash was a lot heavier than it is here. He's pretty happy with his job. They all work hard. Everybody in our company works hard. That doesn't mean that anything should be missed, and, you know, I took the liberty of just looking at our records, and I know Jeff had sent me the records of the calls that have been received. I looked at the last three months. So we would've had the opportunity to collect about 37,000 homes over that period of time. And we have recorded nine calls of people who say their trash was missed. They're all individual calls, so it's about two one-hundredths of a percent. Now, if folks are not calling either us or the town hall, like yourself,
Yep.
I don't know about it, and I can't fix it. I can only fix what comes to me. And when I look at the records here, it has, it's the absolutely lowest amount of missed pickups out of any contract that I have in New England.
Okay, um, I, I don't believe that, but the, if, I get complaints. They don't know who to call, okay? And when they do call, they get nowhere. And I'm just telling you, this is what I hear. Now, I don't know if they're not putting their trash out on time or not.
Right.
But I get complaints that they're, they're throwing recycling in the trash truck, okay? And I actually got into a little debate over that. Said, no, the trash truck, it, it looks like a trash truck, the recycling truck. And this woman told me, clearly no, it was a trash truck, you know, because the next house they took the trash.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a problem. When you have one guy, and I understand, you know, why you're doing it, because it's money.
Sure is, yeah.
Okay, but the problem is, that's not what, what our intent was. Our intent was to fix the problem to, that we were having. This is my feeling, and, and we are having a problem. I mean, it is... I can tell you a lot, there's an awful lot of people that are very, very unhappy. And I think what we need to do... I had no idea you were gonna go to one-man trash, a one-man trash truck, because, and, and Richie, I think Richie was the one that warned me about that, by splitting up in two days.
Right.
I think it's just a bad idea. I think you need to have two guys and, and just get it done. I mean, I picked up trash one day because we, our company, the previous company left us.
Sure.
Let me tell you something, it wasn't easy. And I'm a worker.
Right.
I can pretty much do anything, but I can tell you, it's a lot of work. And this, this kid's by himself. He's gotta get in the truck, out of the truck, in the truck, out of the truck, at every single house. I don't know how you do that. I, I just don't know how you can do that.
It's not, it's not uncommon.
And work effectively.
Right, and, and so when we did, you know, the entire town, you know, in one day, we had a truck with two guys on it, picking up the entire town.
Well, did you have two trucks with...
Well, recycling truck and a, and a trash truck.
Recycle and doing the whole town.
Yeah, and, and so now what we've done is separated that, and so it's...
Still got the two trucks.
It's really the same amount of manpower, it's just, you, you're covering a little bit less, less territory each given day with the truck. And so we're able to, you know, get in and, and get things done. Plus, you're not doing everything on Friday. So that if people come, you know, home late, you're, and try to reach town hall, and you're not open. So Thursday, they have all day to call if they've had any problems, and half a day Friday, and then we're available for the calls. So I, I guess, you know, to, to get to the crux of the matter, I can only correct performance problems if I know about them. At the last meeting, I was clear to tell everybody what our phone number was that they can call. I think everybody knows they can...
It's on the website.
Yep, and I think everybody knows they can call town hall. If folks don't, if they wanna call you instead of calling us, it's not gonna be helpful.
They don't call, I, I tell them to call the police department, because the police department's open 24/7. So if they call the police, the police know what to do. They know to call the town hall or the DPW, whatever.
And so you've seen the records of the calls that have gone to town hall, and I've told you what our records are.
No, I haven't, I haven't, that hasn't been shared with us, but...
Okay.
And that's actually in your binder.
Okay, well, again, you know, a little late, but it's, that's okay.
I was, quite honestly, and in no disrespect, I was absolutely shocked to be called here tonight. We, we, we have a, we have a good communication system with the people that handle the, the calls that come to town hall, and I have a very good system at our office. And so people need to use the right communication channel. If they do, then I can, then we can look at, at records and see why your stop was missed twice. We can see if other people are having issues, and we can talk to our employees and then decide if we need to make some adjustments. But right now, I have nothing to adjust. I can't do any better than this. I can't.
Well, I think one guy is, Dan, that's just my opinion. So you're, you're saying you're, you're okay with it?
I'm okay with, absolutely. Unless you, unless...
What do you think, Jeff? What, what do you think we should do?
What we're seeing is that we've got a very small number of complaints that come into town hall, and none in the police department. So, and the ones that do come into town hall, they're resolved right away. So we're seeing that we're doing very well, and I think the change to two days has worked extremely well.
I'll make sure that everybody calls your, your office.
Yeah, I mean, and then, and then we can sit and look at, at, you know, actual records, and we can figure out if there's something that needs to change. And look, we're not perfect.
Yeah.
You know, I, we miss stops, and, and, you know, we, you know, we're gonna address things when they come to us as quickly as we can.
And you know, I'm a big social media guy. I love social media. I don't say much on it, I read it, okay?
Hello.
But I can tell you that there's broken glass. I get complaints of broken glass. I see it. I don't...
We, we did get a complaint about that.
Broken glass, there's, today there was a pipe in the middle of the street, and, you know, I don't know, it came from the trash truck, but that, I'm sure that just fell out.
Right.
Broken recycling bins, missed trash. And you know, I didn't really mind that they missed my trash. I can just bring it right back in. It's just, all it is is oil bottles.
Right.
I recycle most of my stuff anyway, metal and everything.
Right.
So the bottom line is, and, and this kid works very, I gotta tell you, I, I really think he does a great job.
Good.
But I think he, you need to give him some help.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion. So I'll make sure that, that, you know, I guess I'm wrong, so what I'll do is...
No, I didn't say you're wrong. I just said, I can only, I can only evaluate what, what's come to me.
I'm always wrong to admit if I'm wrong. So what I'll do is, I'll make sure people email the town.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're not trying to hide from anything. That's all I want, is the, the information, and then we can, and then we can address, address those things.
I appreciate it, all right. Any, any more questions, T?
The, the absolute best thing that people can do, that I believe in, is an email, so you can have an audit trail.
Sure.
This way, the communication, he said, she said, this, this, no, it's right here in front of you.
Right.
You know, and they can email. I also am not all that fond of a Friday collection when the town hall closes at whatever time it does. And, and, and I'm hearing that they're having trouble getting through that your line's always busy.
Yeah.
But again, that's he said, she said, but, but that's what they're saying. That's what people are saying. So this way, they have the phone number, they should know that it's online, and they, they now know, because we've said it a hundred times.
Right.
The email would be terrific, an email to the town hall.
Yep. Yeah, we're in constant communication.
And we'll have a, a good number.
Right.
And, and you'll have...
Then we can see if there's, right, then we can see if there's something that needs to be addressed. And I'm happy to address any issues to make sure that the quality of the service is very good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Richie, can you get your sorry?
Well, are you making money on our contract? I mean, I, I think that's a just basic question. I'm saying, maybe we have to change the contract. You know, because I'll be honest with you, the people in this town, they, they leave in the morning, first thing in the morning, and they come home at night. And some put that trash out, you know, at 7:00 AM.
Yep.
And when they come home at five or six o'clock at night, everything's closed, except for the police station.
Right.
And I really don't want our police officers being trash...
No.
...responsible.
Right.
And it just seems that maybe we have to pay you a little more, something, okay? People like to come on and make sure they turn the water on, and they have water.
Yeah.
Okay? And make sure there's electricity in the town.
Right.
Trash is a big thing.
Absolutely.
And trash, you know, it's, it's, it's like, and, and I think it's not only, not your problem, I think it's communication problem on our end. Because the people, you know, I mean, you could tell them the number nine thousand times, unless we have a dedicated 2-1-1 number. Okay, that you can remember 2-1-1 for trash. Maybe we can look into that, okay, for you. Something has to be done, because people, they put the trash out and they want it picked up, you know what I mean?
Right.
And recycle, and they don't wanna be buying recycle bins, you know, and...
Right.
And especially the winter coming on, they freeze and they throw them, and they, they, they're moving so quick down the street. The, the street, we gotta send a guy around to follow them around to pick up stuff in the tree, like the glass breaking, things like that.
Right.
It just, it just seems that I, I think we need to get a better communication system. As you, we know it, because Friday afternoon is doing work on it.
Hmm, right.
Unless I change the time hours, town hall hours, to have them coincide with your trash, you know, so that we can get at least it to four o'clock. Or something, some communication vehicle that we need to get so that we can, because I don't think people are calling, they'll wait. Because they don't have, I mean, there's not a lot of trash.
Right.
Tonnage-wise.
Yeah.
You might have one bag or one barrel, you know?
Right.
It's not a lot.
Right.
And I can see one guy, but, you know, I, I don't know how much would it cost us if you had, make sure you had two guys, one driving the truck and moving down the street, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, with that, you're talking, you're talking with two extra people...
Right.
For two days.
Two days, right.
Okay, and you must be, you know what I mean?
Sixteen hours at $35 an hour with the prevailing wage that we have to pay, so...
Well, that's what I'm saying. Maybe we need to do that.
Yeah.
So that we can, this way here, we don't have any problems.
It's like anything, right? I mean, I think if, if, if the scope of work is, is that, you know, you want stuff done by three o'clock in the afternoon or two o'clock in the afternoon, it's all a computation of labor and equipment, and...
But you've got the town, there's 1,300 homes in the town.
Right.
So, and I would say maybe there's 1,300 bags of trash, every average... So, and I would say, maybe, there's thirteen hundred bags of trash, every average dump, do you know what I'm saying?
Maybe a little more than that, but...
Well, maybe a bag and a half.
Yeah, bag and a half, right.
Because a lot of people, you know, you have seniors, and that's what I'm thinking, you know, I'm looking at that, that's what I...
You're right, yeah.
Those are the numbers I look at.
I think you're right.
But we shouldn't have any complaints, and what would it take to make sure we eliminate all complaints? Because he's not gonna be around, we're not, I mean, the selectmen, by the time, and we don't know who to call, I mean, we call you.
Yeah.
It's like a pain, okay, and a pain in the chest to...
Yeah.
People have, and they don't wanna do that. I don't want them to do that.
No, I, I get you.
I don't know.
I don't, you know...
Even the dedicated number that you have, an operator with an airphone on, coming from Nahat, I mean, as I know, there's gotta be more calls. As I'm, I'm in the Lower East Side.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I'm not in the High End, you know what I mean? I'm not in East Pointe.
Yeah.
My house sits between East Pointe and Bass Pointe, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Now, the East Pointe, we pick up, you do a good job up there.
Alright.
I'll be up there.
We're an equal opportunity company, we try to pick up the same for everybody.
But I think, Jeff, you need to get, we need to get better communications, or somehow, something very simple. Now, I don't know, we have to, it'd be worth, to me, we pay for the extra two guys. I'll be honest with you. That's the way I look at things. You're talking, you know, I mean...
We did have that contract, they were the highest bidder. Under Jeff's recommendation, we gave you the bid, because...
You've done a good job in the past.
No, I don't believe we were the highest bidder. I believe we were the lowest bidder.
I think Mike Manning questioned it.
No, I believe we were the very lowest bidder. I believe we are.
Oh, Mike Manning questioned it. Mike Manning questioned it. I was a brand new selectman when we signed the contract.
I have the results, I can forward those back to you.
Let's not go, let's not go, let's not go there. I just wanna get it.
Look, I wanna get, I wanna get to the issue of a complete and total elimination of complaints. I just don't know if that's realistic.
I don't think, you know...
And so, for me to say, hey, if you pay me more and I put two guys on, I think you're still gonna get certain complaints, right? And so, what I wanna do first is, let's know what they are, right? Because it seems like you all, you know, as representatives of the town, are hearing from people that aren't, you know, satisfied. But we all aren't, and that's what we need, and I'm not begging for it, but...
You're satisfied, you're doing a great job.
Well, until I'm told otherwise, right?
There's no calls to back...
Right, until I'm told otherwise.
Well, did you, let me ask you this, did you get calls like this before, Richie? Years ago? No, yeah, no, no, we did, we did.
A lot?
But the problem, though, I find out, I find out that, number one, they never paid the trash fee.
Okay, that's different.
That was a big problem, putting the trash out.
Right.
Or they were doubling up with the neighbors, which was, you know, the three neighbors you'd get together, one would pay the fee, and they'd take all three. The other thing was, they wouldn't put it out at all.
Sure.
They were very late.
They were late, yeah.
They're coming around at seven o'clock in the morning, and they don't put them out until eleven or twelve when they get up. Or what else, if they work around, you know, work at midnight shift.
Right.
And the problem is, then they call and say, you missed the trash.
Sure, that happens.
Which is, okay?
Very common, yeah.
But when I was getting the calls, I happened to look out my window, I watched, there's people, I'm saying, wait a minute, whoa, this is not fair. Not fair to the contract.
Yeah.
But we need to get, we need to get better communication, and I don't know what the result is, but we just need to have something very, very simple.
Yes.
I mean, you know, and if it's an extra two guys that we gotta, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If you were the low bid, and I trust you were, I don't, I can't remember, I can't remember what I did yesterday. You're asking me to report. When was that bid? It was a three-year deal, right?
It was about, what, a year and a half ago, or something like that.
It was, I was a brand new selectman, and I can tell you, Mike Manning was a selectman, and he questioned it. He questioned why we were paying more of a cart fee or something.
Enzo.
What, am I right?
No, it's actually the, they were the lowest bidder, lowest responsible bidder.
Well, that's not, I mean, they're good contractor. I think, I think you've done a, you know, if a scale of one to ten, I think you're up on the eight and nines, to be honest with you. I think this is a minor problem that we just have to adjust.
Yeah, I think if we can get...
Okay, that's how I feel.
Yeah, if we can get people to communicate and let us know if there's issues, we'll certainly address them.
And then we just gotta make sure the people that know where to call, and the number where they call. So that someone, if we have to, it might behoove us to put an operator up here somewhere, or some, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I just, I just, because calling us, I mean, I don't, you call the police department, and they're changing shifts, and, you know, they're not...
Yeah, it's not, and look, the best channel is not police, and it's not the board of selectmen. The best channel is Town Administrator's Office and Waste Management. Because it's the direct, it comes to us quickly, right? If it goes to the Town Administrator's Office, they're in communication with us all the time, and if it comes to us.
But they're not, he's not going on Friday, what are you gonna do?
Friday afternoon, right, so I understand. That's why I gave our number, you know, for people...
Would you go? The police is twenty-four seven, they're gonna, the police are gonna call him, they're gonna call with the DPW.
Sure.
I suggest they just call the police, it's easier, they answer the phone right away, but my trash wasn't picked up, they're gonna call the DPW immediately. The DPW will get it out, okay, so...
I don't know the best communication channel for your town, that's all I know, is as soon as it gets to me, I can address it, in whatever fashion you wanna get it to me.
Problem is, I hate to put the onus on the police department, because if they ever get an emergency, lifesaving, you know, they're running, you know... It's only too high, you know what I'm saying? And we just, I mean, we've, unless we, unless, do you wanna buy a headset? I mean, do you have a headset at home, or?
Yeah, sure, I got a headset.
Do you have an extra one?
I can bring one in.
Well, bring one and give it to Jeff, maybe Jeff, you and Jeff take it together and come up with a headset deal or something. But I mean, I, I mean, we're tying up the meeting, it's just, you know what I'm saying? And we don't need to tie this up.
That's right.
We got a lot of business, we got the WAF guy coming up here.
One final, Jim, that, I'm the newer of the three, newest, thank you, of the three, but I've been bouncing around ideas. And one of my ideas is, Friday might be a tough day to collect trash. Maybe it could be Wednesday, Thursday, so... Because people don't get their trash done on Friday, sit with it until Monday, or even next time. So I was thinking, and with the Town Hall closed, half-time, half-day Friday, you know, and supposedly, it's hard to get ahold of you. Something to throw around for the next contract.
Right.
Something I'm thinking of. But, in the meantime, I still wanna go with the emails, the audit trail.
Well, that's good, but a lot of people don't have computers, that's the other problem. The other thing is, put a dumpster down there. I know Dennis is going, oh my God, if people miss, miss the, miss it, just miss the trash. They're on vacation, they come back, they can take it down to the public works, I'm just using your public, we could put it up to Town Hall. Somewhere in town where they can put their trash in the dumpster, I know, an open dumpster, you know what I mean, Dennis?
Yeah, the only thing is, leaving a dumpster where it's not, you know...
Well, it has to be secured.
It's gotta be secured, and it's gotta be observed, and it's gotta...
I've sat him on it for a couple of hours, down behind the public works, somewhere down there that if people miss it, they have a place they know in their mind they can take the trash down there. I mean, they're gonna have to get, we don't want contractors dumping down there, and I don't want people not paying the trash bill dumping down there either. They need to get, you know, this is, you know, it's...
Right, that might be...
They have to pay the trash bill, number one, and number two, I think, there's dumpsters down there, I can tell you, people don't wanna bring their trash down there.
Right.
If they're missed, okay? I've picked up trash for people. I get in my truck, and I go, and they call, and I go out and pick it up, and you know something? Because I'm not gonna have the DPW going out on a Friday afternoon and get overtime. I think it's ridiculous. So, there is a problem. That's my opinion, okay? And you can take that whatever way you want, you need to fix it. I don't know how you're gonna do it, but you're gonna get the emails. You're just gonna get the emails, and you're gonna get them, alright?
That's for...
So, that's the end of this conversation.
Very good.
Before you...
Thank you.
I wanna say thank you for coming in.
Oh, yeah, no, my pleasure.
Alright.
Thank you, Jim.
Nice meeting you.
We'll get to the bottom of it.
Good meeting you.
Alright. Next on the agenda, we're gonna go to the kite surfing, and Doggy Beach.
Doggy Beach, what about these guys? Are they here for Doggy Beach?
The WAF project, first of all, wait a minute, wait, hold on for one second, we have the WAF project.
Where's Dennis going? Dennis leaving?
No, he's... We have the WAF project.
Yes.
Where are the engineers?
The Child's Engineering, who's our major engineer on the project, they, the engineers that we use are specifically down in the Gulf Coast area because of the hurricanes. So, they are out of town, and will be back sometime in early to mid-November, given their schedule.
Okay, so we have to wait till November to have them come in. Have you paid them in fall?
Not in fall, no.
Okay, okay. I, we want, I would like to know when they finally get their final payment, is that okay?
Yep.
Yeah, you're the chairman.
Alright, well, I mean, I think, I think it's, I want them in here, okay? And there's one other person that's involved, heavily involved.
This is the WAF project?
Yeah, VM Consulting, she's not here, so I think we'll put this off. Is that okay?
We have Unified here.
Wait, wait, Dennis wants to say so.
No, no, no.
For the, for the WAF project?
Yeah, they've traveled here to get here.
I can tell you, I want the two engineers here.
Well...
Dennis, I want the two engineers here.
Wait, wait a minute, I, I, I like to hear it, I like to hear what they have to say.
But I wanna see, I wanna see what the engineers have to say. The other ones that are coordinating it. They're not here, Richie. I asked for them to be here, they're not here.
Well, they're down in the Gulf Coast helping out or something.
Okay, and I found that out, I think, today.
Oh.
And the other one, I asked for, I asked for everybody to be here that was involved in the WAF project, and we have, I asked you, two guys?
Well, this is, we're, this is...
Everyone that's involved in this project.
Just a contractor?
Yes.
Just a contractor, and...
It's a Unified Construction.
Oh, you're both contractors, oh, okay.
So, Bill and, Bill and David here.
Sorry, I want them here.
Okay, so you don't want an update?
Nope. For what?
Well, we have the contractor here.
I'd like to ask a quick, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Are we in the, no, I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
What?
Well, I, you're gonna start this project, you know, the weather's fantastic, I mean, this is the last couple of weeks, it's like, it's like summer here, seventy-five degrees. And I'm thinking, you know, I don't wanna change the date, but I, you do this project in December, or January, correct?
December.
You're gonna have to have, you're gonna have to have antifreeze...
In with a mixture of cement, am I correct?
Is that a... Freezing up, okay. Is there any way where you can move up the timetable on that?
Bill, could I get you, have you stand up to the mic, thank you.
Last time we were here, we discussed, because of the fishermen taking the boats out. This is Bill Gere.
He came up here before. No, listen, I said no, I'm the chairman, I don't want to hear from you. I want, I want the engineers here, because number one, number one, my answers weren't, my questions weren't answered the last time, Richie, alright? Jeff, I went to the WAF yesterday, this is in February last year. There is no way you're gonna have the slip done in time. Also, the four things they put in, I knocked down in the mud, and the cement mix is, it's all sand, it's a bad mix. Why isn't Child's Engineering watching them? They weren't watching them, okay? Now I got an email back, Enzo, Dennis, Vicki, and I have been discussing this all along, and the two of them are on top of the situation. It is believed that the project will be done on time. Is it done? It's not done, not even close. So, my question is, when I ask you the questions, I got no answers. So I want the engineers that are responsible for this, and the administrator who is responsible for it, and solely responsible for it, to answer my questions. So I'm not gonna call on you until we have the engineers here. It's as simple as that.
So after the, after we made the decision, after we made the decision on the Phase One.
Jeff?
We had the engineers here, and they answered just that question.
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did.
No, they didn't. They didn't answer anything.
We would never have notified that there was a bad mix or anything else, so...
I'm not gonna argue about it, I'm telling you, I'm not gonna hear it until the engineers are here, okay? I want Child's here, and I want VM Consulting here to answer some questions. Simple as that. VM Consulting wasn't here, she never answered any questions.
No, and Dennis dropped you to that?
But her name's all over, their name is Dennis, their names are, I have emails to prove it, their names are all over this.
That may be.
And you know, my greatest fear is, what am I gonna tell you, my greatest fear is, it won't get done.
It's gonna get done.
Well, you know something, I don't, I don't trust them, not from, I don't trust them at all.
They've been a good partner at this point.
You know something, I don't trust them, because it wasn't done, my answers, my questions weren't answered, I stayed with, they weren't going down there. Richie asked the questions, I asked the questions, and it's not done.
Correct.
And now we wanna move the date up, the fishermen, those guys aren't gonna be out till the middle of December, and you, everybody wants to move the date up, again.
We have, we have a contracted date that's been agreed to, okay? The contract that is in place this very second, alright, is, is, in pla, is, is a good contract.
I'm not gonna argue about this, I want them here. End of story. Thank you. We'll move on to the kite surfing.
So, at the last meeting, Rich, I know you weren't here for that one, but it was suggested that we get the feedback from the fire chief and police chief to get their feedback on what to do about kite surfing. Mostly, the fire chief had a strong opinion, the police chief had some opinion, but basically deferred to the fire chief. And basically, they had a similar opinion to what we discussed last time, and that was, their recommendation is to, for the town to not take any formal, any new formal restrictions to kite surfing, and treat it as you would any other activity, with a certain amount of risk. But also, as part of the recommendation, to look at what some of the other towns have done that are in similar circumstance. So, South Boston, West Dennis, and Chatham, three towns that have a lot of kite surfing in Massachusetts. And those towns have allowed the kiting community to adopt some reasonable restrictions on themselves, voluntary restrictions on themselves, to try to increase safety. So, talking to some of the kiting community here in Nahat, what we've come up with, I think, is something that will, I think, really addresses the primary safety concern at Doggy Beach, which is landing and launching kites in close proximity to the roadway and rocks. And I really think that that's, of all the incidents we have, that's been the main cause of the incident. I think by restricting that area, making that area out of bounds for landing and launching kites, I think will help take care of that safety concern. So that is the recommendation. And I hope you guys will take that recommendation. If you don't take that recommendation, we certainly have other ideas, other things that we could do as well, but we think that's the best way to handle this.
Do you think it's adequate that we just got this today? How are we supposed to make a decision on any of this when we just got this information today from the police and fire chief?
I just got it myself.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one thing I would say is that, you know, we just met two weeks ago, and the fire chief was on vacation, so we just, very recently, got his feedback on Monday, this Monday, so just a few days ago.
And I had actually asked this to be moved out two weeks, and you had actually asked it to be put back on.
Right, right.
So the two weeks would have given us more time to study this?
And that's fine, if you guys wanna just, you know...
So, you don't think two weeks is adequate time to come up with an answer from the police chief or the fire chief?
No, the fire chief was on vacation until this Monday, and actually responded Monday, he sent his feedback, I think, on Tuesday. And so, there we are.
Anybody? Richie, T?
Well, you know, it's just one of the concern, it's safety for us.
Sure, sure.
And the younger, the younger kite flyers, where do you come, kite?
Kite surfers, yeah.
I mean, that's a great sport, you see them down in Florida, but they land on the beach. Down there, when they go kite flying, it's usually very high winds, very high winds. And when they get blown in, they hit the rocks. I mean, and I just, it just, you know, I see them. And it's a most, it's probably the very, very dangerous area. Not only for the kite going into the rocks, but getting to that beach, Doggy Beach, from, they're coming in from, I don't know where they're coming in from. They gotta be parking in Lynn Beach and walking over, and it just seems, a lot of them are unloading their cars up in the grass area, which is, I don't blame them. It's probably more, the safety aspect of it is, they're up in the, out of the way, unload all their gear, boards and kites and everything, and then drive off the curb and go park somewhere. I'd rather have you, I'd rather have you move the operation during the winter months, because that's usually when, down on the other side,
Yeah.
which is Shot Beach.
Yep, so...
And use that, because if they come in, they're gonna hit sand, they don't, they're not gonna hit rocks. You know, those rocks are right there at high tide, and twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago, that beach and the tides are changing. And we used to have maybe thirty, thirty yards, forty yards, forty yards of beach between the, between high tide and the rocks. So they had plenty of room to land. Now it's changed, because the water around Nahat is rising. I mean, the table is getting, we, we don't, we don't have the luxury of a gray area where, if they come in, and usually they come in hard, because they're, they're, that wind is probably, I don't know, what, forty miles an hour, thirty miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour, and they're jumping and everything else, but the problem is now, there's, that tide is right up against, that, that beach is closed, okay? And I'm just afraid someone's gonna get, we've, well, we've had a couple serious, seriously injured.
Yep.
And, and I just think, it would be better to give you authorization to go on to Shot Beach
Right.
for, just during the winter months, you couldn't do it during the summer months. You know, like, say from May through September, that area would restrict, you wouldn't, you know. You know, and it's, it's like, all of a sudden, I saw, what was I, down on the backside by the Ocean View?
Yep.
Kind of greens, now, that is extremely dangerous, but they were down there.
Yeah.
And they come in through the park, and that, that is like, I mean, there ain't no room at all, have you, and...
Were they landing and launching there, or just riding?
They were, they were launch, not launching from the park over the rocks, and then, I mean, that's like...
Yeah.
Not a room you board.
Right.
Let me tell you, I, I, you know, I just, I got a, you know, a couple complaints about that, I just, people are afraid, I, I just think, you know, my, my personal fear is, I, you know, it's a great sport, I, I, you know, I love to, the problem is, it's, it's getting to the point where, where, you know, where, I'm afraid before someone really, I mean, they've been seriously hurt already, but to lose a life, because y'all going out, these surfers are going out, usually when there's high wind, that's the best time to go. High waves, and they're jumping, and the other thing is, you know, I'll rescue people, I mean, they couldn't go out to get them. I mean, it's like, I mean, they could go out, but I, I don't think they can go far, 'cause all we got is a Zodiac and a Witchcock boat. I mean, you do it down, you do it down at Long Beach, which is the State Police Beach, that, what's wrong with that down there? I mean, there's plenty of sand there.
Sure, so, so, yeah, if I could address, so, so first of all, Rich, I completely agree with a lot of what you said, in terms of definitely concern for safety. You know, what you said in terms of the hazards at Dog Beach, they certainly exist, and I apologize, some of this discussion happened previously as well, and then some also is included in what the Fire Chief's recommendation was. So we, I think, agree in principle on all those things, and we are actually, this proposal is to address what we think is the main safety issue, which is people landing and launching with kites high in the air near those rocks, and that's the circumstance in which we've had both those accidents. Now, modern kite surfing has a lot of, we have safety releases, we can detach ourselves from the kite, and, and also depower the kite. But what you need for those safety systems to be effective is you need a buffer zone. You need enough time, you need a hundred yards in which to activate the system, so that, and the problem is, if you're trying to land and launch a kite, it's a water sport, so when you're out in the water, you're safe. The, the, the danger part is getting on and off the beach, and so the idea here is that we would restrict ourselves to a safer part of the beach that's further away from the road, that has a sand dune backing, and has brush to actually, will actually disable the kite itself if it just lands there.
So where, where are you saying?
So, so basically, further down Dog Beach, away from where the, the rock wall extends for a certain period, and then you have a sand dune, and it gets further away from the roadway. And now, I will say also, what, what you mentioned about the water coming right up to the rocks and the edges where there's not a lot of beach, that is also a concern, right, that's, that causes kiter's to try to rig closer to the beach, and they're closer to hazards. So that's why Dog Beach, though, is actually an extremely dangerous, extremely safe beach in some circumstances, which is basically when the tide is lower, and you have a flat where you can rig your kite out.
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and, you know...
Well, so, and, and, so, but, you know, in terms of opening up Shot Beach, the, the issue is that wind directions matter, right? So we have a southwest wind, and Dog Beach is one of the few beaches actually in the Boston area that has a west-facing beach. And so in a west wind, it's the safest beach to actually be on, so, and that's, so I think properly restricted, but allowed access, but properly restricted, I think Dog Beach can be a benefit.
The problem, I don't have the personnel to get down there and watch this stuff.
Right, sure, and I think that, you know, and other towns have done this, where they, we've basically said, you know, I think all, and, you know, we, I, the accident actually happened one of the few days I'm not on the beach, and I think if I was there, I could have probably prevented it.
No, 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 but...
But I think the one thing that helped me is that it's a very simple rule to restrict kiting to a certain section of the beach that is inherently safer, it doesn't require a lot of technique.
Yep, but that, that zone that you're, you're talking about, the safer part, is down toward the houses?
Well, no, I mean, it would be between, you know, between this end, right, okay.
I swam there.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
I, I, I lived right here, right down the park, so I live...
No, I know, I'm sure you...
So I know exactly, you know, and then, if they make a mistake, they're gonna hit pilings on the other side. You're in between the rocks, a beach, and houses, and that, that, that section is, is extremely tough, because you get the back of the houses where they pile rocks and moorings, I mean, big pilings.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I mean, if you go further, like, if you, if you are down by Castle Road, then yes, you have houses, but, but, you know, typically, we're there at mid-low, mid-tide or lower, in which case you have shallow waters, you have distance to stop yourself from those hazards. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with all, and so, another...
Let me tell you another thing, we banned swimming at the Town Wash.
Yep.
You, you, you know that?
I know that, yeah, the diving, yeah.
And the kids are upset. We've been swimming there as long as I've lived, which is a long time, I mean, we used to swim, jump off the roof, swim, and, because you, you grew up in Nahat, off the, up the Farley Steps, okay?
Right.
This is, we've shut down the walk because of safety, and now all of a sudden, I, I just don't understand, you've got beaches where, I'm thinking you put, you Shot Beach, but that's, you keep saying the wind, the west wind and everything, but I'm saying, you know, we, we're not in the, we're not in the business of creating, you know what I mean, it's like, I feel bad, I feel bad, I'm gonna vote against, I'm gonna vote for banning it on that beach, because I think it's an, because the other, let me tell you, there's another factor. To get to that beach, you're coming in the major entrance to the town. That's one way in, one way out, and we've got people coming over that Little Nahat road, you know, as you drive in, right by the bank, and then you go down that hill, they're crossing right there, people coming in, and they, people drive very fast, and they come across the car's way, come down that hill, and before you know it, these guys are crossing the street there. You, you know they almost hit somebody several times, because they're crossing down there, because they walk along that Little Nahat side or the playground, and they cross right by that playground with the fences, where we caught, what are you, thank God, we, that surfer that blew over the roadway and the fence caught him. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm totally against it, because I just think, you know, I, 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 I don't know who's down there, who's using that beach, number one. They can't be all Nahat residents, because they're walking...
A lot of the people you see here today.
Well, you know...
And, and more, I have a...
I counted fifteen kites down there yesterday.
Yep.
That's a lot, I think that's, I think it's an overabundance. Well, I, I just, I just think we're, we're kidding ourselves.
It's not a crowded kite beach in terms of kite beaches, it's not a crowded kite beach in terms of kite beaches versus like other, other towns, I say that, what I'm saying is, there are other towns that have successfully negotiated access to kite surfing that have a lot more kites on them, and, you know, those exist on the Cape, in South Boston, it's amazingly crowded, there could be fifty kiter's in a very tiny area, so it, it does happen.
Would it be, right here where you have this, this orange line?
Yep.
That's going towards the car's right, right?
Right, and it's a...
Why can't you guys launch from the MDC ramp?
We could, we could, and as a matter of fact, if you were to ban kiteboarding at Dog Beach, kiteboarding's a water sport, and so we would probably launch at the MDC ramp and ride down to Dog Beach area, that's probably what would happen, but that's not the safest thing to do either. The MDC launch tends to be gustier because of its location, it's closer to land, people launch at Dog Beach, 'cause it's the safer option.
Okay, but, you see, and the problem, the other problem I have is, you got on the sign, it's gonna say, it, I've never seen anything like this in my life, kiter's and beachgoers use caution, beachgoers, beachgoers are beachgoers.
Well...
It's been, people have been going to the beach for a thousand years.
There, I'm taking the, the success that the kiting community has had, and South Boston has exactly that phrase on its sign, and people have appreciated that because of, it alerts two things, one is that, you know, it, it identifies, you know, it tells kiter's to be cautious, but also, it lets the beachgoers know, hey, there's a risk here, and that, you know, if you have a, a child that, you know, you're afraid, or maybe your dog doesn't like kites, and your, your dog, the, the beachgoers know that, oh, I can just go to this area of the beach, and I know I will not run into, I will not have an issue with a kite.
But they're all along that whole Dog Beach, and that's my point exactly.
Yeah.
Beachgoers are pedestrians.
Sure, sure, and it'll...
It's like driving a car, and this is what Bobby, Bobby Dwyer used this analogy, he said, you know, we have a duty to act, and, you know, 'cause I talked to him and, and about this, and he said that we have a duty to act, I understand that, he said, uh, he goes, Enzo, you know, he goes, people drive cars, and they have accidents, people drive boats, and they have, and they have accidents.
People scuba dive.
However, people have been driving cars for a long time. This is fairly new, and we have, we have an opportunity, and there's restrictions on cars, there's restrictions on, on boats, okay? You used to be able to go out and drink and, drink and, drink on a boat, if you drank on a boat now, you lose your license.
I'm not saying...
So there's, there's restrictions, so, again, I don't think, I, I think, beachgoers are pedestrians, that's my point exactly, you can't tell beachgoers to look out for a kite. We had a surfing area, remember Richie down at, in T, down at the, on Shot Beach? There was two big poles, and that was, you couldn't go beyond that if you were a surfer, and you had to stay in those limits so that you didn't interfere with people that were swimming.
Sure.
Okay, so, I don't think you could, you should be taking up the whole beach, I counted like fifteen or sixteen kites, and the guy, one, one guy, I was coming back from the bank, almost lost the kite, and it almost went off the street again, and I was just kinda waiting for it, and I just kept going, but, this was the day before yesterday, so, I think it's an issue that we need to, I think we need to put restrictions on it, if, if we go ahead and do anything at all.
Yeah, if you, so, I came to just quickly summarize what the Fire Chief and the Police Chief had recommended. I concur with that recommendation, if you guys would like to, the Fire Chief had some, you know, detailed suggestions in terms of what Rich was saying, in terms of safety, and, you know, he also echoed the concern I mentioned, which is that if we were to restrict it too much, it may actually cause a safety concern, because we, people will use Long Beach in the offshore winds, which are, you know, decidedly more dangerous, and so, there's that concern as well, so I do like, I, we're all for safety restriction.
Yeah.
I mean, we agree, I mean, we, you know, we want signs, and we want, you know, people to act responsibly, and we don't want issues with beachgoers. This is our recommendation for that, if the town would like to adopt these rules, we would like to just implement them ourselves. We think it would be effective if you just allow us to put up a sign, I think it'd be very easy to enforce. It will quickly become part of the community, and you'll, you won't see any kites in front of the rocks there. But if you'd like to adopt the restrictions as part of the town, then, you know, it's something that, you know, we could work on. So that'll just take some time, we could work on the exact wording of the signage, happy to work on that, add anything you want to it. And, you know, in terms of other safety issues like parking on the grass, that's been part of our culture, we actually had another occurrence of it recently, and we told the person to evacuate immediately, got them to move along. It's something that people that have come to Nahat, you know, maybe they came here a couple of years ago, and they didn't realize that it was an issue.
I see, I see, well, I, I, I didn't, I mean, I just got this tonight, so I, I haven't had time to look through it, but the Fire Chief says these rules are effective through, effective June fifteenth through Labor Day, so, I mean, what's he...
Oh, he's just, I think he's just, I think he's just looking at other town rules, so he's just quoting what's, what's been done with other towns.
Okay, I, I didn't have time.
And so, I think he just sort of researched...
It's quite extensive, it's, it's, there's an awful lot to it, so...
Yeah, and he just basically researched what other towns have done, and what they have in terms of rules, and, and, you know, my presentation, or what my suggestion is for the rules is a very simple rule, because it's, you know, I, I've tried complicated rules, that, you know, but a very simple rule that just moves kiting to a safer area, I think is the, the best way to handle it. It's not ideal for us, it's, it's further walking, it limits where we can kite, it limits what wind directions, 'cause sometimes when the wind's more south, you wanna be the other end, so it's not ideal, but I, I think it's better, I think it's the best way to, anyway, that's my suggestion. If, if someone would like to work with me more on it, that has particular concerns about the suggestion, I'm happy to work with them on it.
Well, my opinion on this is that with restrictions and working things out, I would, I would be in favor of continuing.
Yep.
But I, further away from the rocks, I mean, talking about and working up over.
Yep.
There are three or four cages here from Feinberg, I know, and you have some too. I'd rather go forward with making it happen, so, I just wanna give you my two cents.
Okay.
There is a danger, and, and it's something we should probably look at each year, but, I, I also went by the other day, and I counted eight, but they were having a blast, and they were way out, and, and, they are listening.
Right, yeah.
They are listening to you, I know they are.
Yeah, and, and I, and I would say, you know, the Fire Chief said that he had the concern about if we, you know, restrict it too much here, that they'll go to the offshore, and that's a major issue, and also that he's seen a decrease in calls, he's not had as many calls, you know, obviously, we had a severe one at Dog Beach, but we've had fewer calls in offshore this year.
I, I'd like to be able to look at this stuff, if, if that's okay.
I'm not saying a vote now, I'm just taking our advice.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I just...
Can we bring the Fire Chief in?
Sure.
For the next meeting, 'cause I'd like to hear what he has to say, and, and Bobby, to see exactly what they have to say.
Also, for you to remember those two poles and the surfing, that means we're real old, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was.
Surf woods, remember?
Yeah, I remember it.
But that might be something to think about too, Dylan.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, here's your area to launch from.
That's exactly what this is, actually, this is, this, that's exactly what this is, this is, we put a signpost at this location, it says kite surfing over here. That way, now, it, you know, we could restrict it however much, the more restriction, it then, we, we do try to, as kite surfers, try to all assemble in one location on the beach. we, we do try to, as kite surfers, try to all assemble in one location on the beach. Uh, and then hopefully when we're out in the water, then yes, we go back and forth. Uh, but we're not taking up a large section of the beach. Um, but if we, you know, we can, we can restrict the launch area. We do try to leave it as open as possible because honestly, for various conditions, different locations are safer.
Right.
And so we try to use the best spot.
Something to work on.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll, we'll-
So, I'm, I just wanna-
We'll continue until we, we, um, he has another.
Well, I, I just had a question. So I just wanna, so you guys would, uh, so the suggestion is that, um, work more with the fire chief and, or, or, I don't know, have the fire chief come back and make a more specific recommendation.
I'd like to hear what he has to say in person.
Okay, alright, sure.
It'll be November second.
Okay, yeah.
Because ultimately, you know, the, like, you know, like Richie says, I mean, it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
I don't wanna see anybody get hurt, and we've already had two incidents, and they could've been really, they could've been bad. They could've been worse. And ultimately, we're responsible. And you're, you know, if something does happen that's bad, they're gonna, they're gonna say, why didn't you do something about it? Why didn't you do something about it before? Why didn't you ban it? Those are the, those are the things that they're gonna say. I mean, trust me, Mr. Lombard's been a selectman for a long time, and I'm sure in the past, things have happened and- These people are not from Nahat. Majority of them. Am I correct? If you're moving it down the beach toward Nahat.
No, it's, it's-
This, this section down here?
Well, actually, what it'll do is, actually, this, my, my, it, yes, not everyone is from Nahat.
No, no, no.
But I would say that if you move the launch area further down towards Nahat,
Yeah.
it will actually reduce the amount of people that come here from other towns. Because it's strictly, it's basically further for them to walk. The only place they can park is in the DCR beach. And I, I know, because they complain to me all the time. They go, well, and I, I tell them, I say, they're setting up in front of the rocks. And I'm like, what are you doing here? This is dangerous here. Go down the beach. And they're like, well, I've already walked all the way here. And I said, well, keep walking. And so, I mean, I, I know this will discourage people.
Down there every day, you gotta, you, you know, if you might not be, you, you have to, you can't, we, I am not gonna, I'm absolutely not in favor of you policing it because you can't put that pressure on yourself or any one of these other guys. You have to understand that I've seen people launch right where that cement wall ends, uh, where the police parking lot. You know, they just, they just jump in the water right there with their kites. I mean, they, they walk right, I've seen them run across the street. I've almost, you know, they, they come right across the street from, they, they park in the parking lot. They don't care where they're gonna launch. And this is the, this is the problem. It's like the dogs. They, they bring them, I mean, they're coming from everywhere. Once it gets out there and people know, that, that becomes a problem, and we don't have the resources here. Now, I, I talked to Bobby, and he says, well, we do have the resources, we have mutual aid. Well, I, I don't, I don't believe in that because, yes, we do have mutual aid, but you know something? We don't have the money to, to hire, I wish we could, hire two more po- police officers, two more firemen, and, and possibly two lifeguards that would blow a whistle and say, no, you're not, get out, you know? We don't, we don't have that yet, and we're never gonna have that.
Right, wait, so, so I would, so if, if, I mean, I do think that this rule is, I think, the easiest, safest way to, this restriction. Now, if you wanted to make this a town restriction and make it citable, and there's a sign, so any bystander can see, hey, that guy's violating, he's, you know, right there at the police parking lot, um, and he's pumping a kite. Uh, it's pretty easy to, pretty easy to get him fined, so if you wanna make it-
You know, and I know they're not gonna pay attention to these restrictions.
Oh, no, they absolutely will. I mean, particularly if we put up a sign-
I guarantee it.
If we put up a sign, like I said, the experience, my experience is-
You know, we don't have lifeguards in town, you know that? On any of the beaches, never have.
Right, I do know that.
I mean, I, you know, I, I, it just, uh,
Okay.
All of a sudden, this kite thing, we set that beach up for the dogs, and then we, I'm getting complaints from the dog owners. They go down there and that, we, we, we might have to restrict the dogs because of all this. Because the dogs, these people that own the dogs, they wanna walk and they let the dogs free. And, um, there's a conflict here because we've had a, I've got some complaints where someone, you know, the dogs are barking at the, at the kiter's too. I mean, you, you hear it and you know it. So I've got the dog owners, which that beach was assigned for them, and they can't take their dog on any other beach in the town. And so, I, you know, and, and, and moving it, you know, down to a, an open area, I, I just, I, I just don't, you know, you're out there when there's major wind. You need major wind to make all these jumps in the, in the, in the, you know. I mean, it's a perfect beach for tide-wise because it's very shallow. I mean, it's high enough, probably up to your waist, it's perfect. If those rocks weren't there, I wouldn't have a problem with this thing. I wouldn't even have a problem. But, I mean, say we have another incident. This time someone really loses their life. Then, then what happens then?
So-
What, what would happen then? What would you, what would you think if we had a kite and we, someone lost their lives down there?
I, I would expect nothing to happen. I would expect a man to lose, lose his life. That's what I would expect.
I'm talking about a pedestrian.
Oh, a pedestrian, then, then obviously, uh, uh, there could be a lawsuit over that. And I, that, that kiter may be sued. As a matter of fact, kiter's carry insurance.
But what do you think-
Kiter's can carry insurance for, it's like driving a car. You can carry kiter insurance for-
But I, what do you think they're gonna think of, of us? And the town, and, and, and the police, and the fire, and, you know, ultimately, it boils down to us.
Well, there hasn't, that I know, that I could find, there hasn't been an example of that, but, um, obviously, I understand the concern.
Those are the concern, I hope you understand, those are the concerns.
Okay, so I do understand that it's a concern, like I said, the concern about the ban, the fire chief had the same one. It could actually decrease safety because of kiting in other more dangerous locations.
Mr. Chairman, I move retable until, uh, we have, we hear from the fire chief.
Uh, final comment before-
I appreciate you taking the time and the effort. I mean, it's very admirable of you to do it. I'm just, you know, I, I, you know, I, I just, I'm just afraid. I'm afraid of someone really being serious. Those, those two incidents, they hit those rocks hot. I mean, you know, um, have you ever skydived?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
I have too.
Yeah.
But it was in the Marine Corps.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to tell you, we have equipment, you know, we got equipment to land. Uh, some of those kids are going fifty, sixty feet in the air. And the problem is, and I see it-
Some of the older folks too.
This is, well, this is a younger, this is a younger generation sport. I mean, you've gotta be in great shape, number one, to go out in that wind and hold the board and your legs, and you really gotta be in great shape. And some of them are wearing helmets and some are not. I'm just, you know, it's, it's just-
I mean, statistically, kite surfing is, is, is actually a relatively safe sport. Um, it's not an extreme sport.
Listen-
Not wingsuit folk.
If there was, if there was just the sand dunes down there, I'd have no problem with it.
Well, and, 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 you know, in the details of it, there's a reason why Dog Beach is the safest, one of the safest places in the area to kite in the right conditions, right? It has shallow water that goes out for hundreds of yards, it has a nice tidal flat. That's, that's why you see a lot of kite surfers there is because it has a safe condition.
All right, we, I don't wanna, we, I don't wanna go any further. T, T wants to have something to say.
If I may get a final word in here, is that I see it as a place to windsurf that people know about is a lot and has restrictions, and maybe a lot safer than them launching anywhere else because they can't go to Doggy Beach. I see that as, as a plus also. So if we take away Doggy Beach, this is how I'm looking at it, and we don't get the opportunity to set it up and work on it, make it, make it workable, for lack of a better word. They might go all other places. I saw them on the other side of Tides, I saw them on, on Short Beach. I mean, so, now, okay, here's your space, but you've gotta, you know-
I, I think a, a good example is what Enzo's suggesting. I mean, I, I mean, I had thought, well, what if you guys do ban it at Doggy Beach? And I go, well, I'll, we'll be setting up at the MDC site, which is not as safe.
Even then.
And I would be kiting in the same location.
And they'll still come back.
And even then, you're still gonna have kiter's ending up on Dog Beach because of whatever. They, they get in a condition where they need to come ashore.
Okay.
So, um, so, so, I, so the suggestion will be to have the fire chief come back, um, and a, on a detailed recommendation. This is the one I have now. If you guys have any other concerns or something you wanna vote on, um, you know, I do think we tried to address all the concerns. I think this addresses the bystander one as well. Um, but I'm happy to continue to work on a different recommendation if this is not satisfactory.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you, thanks Dylan. Um, okay, so Richie, Richie move, I'll, I'll, so move.
Second.
You move, okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're gonna wait for the fire chief to, uh, come and speak about it, okay?
And the police chief.
And the police chief.
And the police chief, right. Again, you talked to the police chief, but I'd like him here too.
Yeah. Well, I, it was, it asked me to think, so-
Oh, I understand.
Because I, I hadn't heard from him, so, I actually called him. Alright, so, uh, alright, next one is public pathway enforcement. Um, I see in our folder, you have a letter. Jess?
Yes, so what we have here is, we were waiting for the butters list, and we got that yesterday. So we're now ready to send out the packet. Um, what you have is a cover letter that council has reviewed and likes. And then you have the engineering information behind it, and what'll happen is that, um, all parties to each side of these engineered drawings, um, I don't know if you, do you have the two G?
It's, uh, two G.
Yeah, she, yeah. She didn't give us everything, but so what you have here is a lot of information.
Uh, keep going this way. What is, what's two G?
It's a letter for the historic pathways.
Yep.
Says Mr. John Doe for lack of-
Right.
Yep. And so-
Why can't we, this is two G, public pathways?
Right.
Yep.
Why can't we tab the book according to your, uh-
From the outside?
Oh, you've got ongoing business.
Right.
Have a major tab, and then two A, two B, two C.
Sure.
So instead of me flipping through pages here, two D.
Yep.
So where's G?
It's, uh, right.
At the end.
Yeah.
I mean, why do we, why, I, can't?
Okay, well, well, why are you-
Just keep it, keep it simple, Mr. Chairman. Would you straighten this out?
Yes, sir.
Are you in on that?
Oh, yeah. Well, just, uh- Uh, that's E, keep going.
E.
There's a lot of information right there. Um, so what you'll see is there's a cover letter that will go with the engineered drawing.
Two G here it is, yeah.
Okay, my, my question is, um, over the past three years, the Open Space Master Plan, you hired VM Consulting, and they did the public pathways also. Why did we spend money with that, that outfit, that, that consultant when it was already done with CPC money? I mean, we've had these, we, we've had this discussion before. The planning board had already had this stuff, and it, and you frustrated, uh, the, the town is frustrated, a gentleman in Little Nahat. To the point where he's, he's just not happy, and, and the signs are down, these are public rights aways. All the signs came down, people just think they can take them down. We've paid for this, how many times did we pay to have, have the, have this done? I mean, you had it done with the Open Space Master Plan, which has kinda died off. I don't see anything with that anymore. Uh, and VM Consulting did that, she also did that, so, can, I, I'd like to get her in for that. And she did a very brief, she got paid a lot of money to do a very brief description of the public pathways, and, and she did mention in that that people have taken them over. They have planted trees, they've put cement walkways in, they've put, uh, stone walls up, they've blocked them off, uh-
So the open-
It's beyond the frustrating point right now.
The Open Space Recreation Master Plan was put together as a means of collecting all the other plans that have been put together separately to put them into one master plan. And the reason for that was to create a grant writing tool. So if the plan itself consolidated in, um, kind of a sequential order, these plans and how they interreact, then we can ease, more easily write grants. Uh, the planning board has done remarkable work that you see in that packet that Richie's looking at, uh, in engineering the, um, exact location of these, of right of ways. So all VM Consulting did was roll that in as a means of reference and then to allow the greater grant writing opportunity.
So, the, the grant, listen, we don't need grants to put signs up and tell people they can't take over someone's land, okay? It's town land. I'm tired of it, I want it done, okay? CPC money was used to do this a couple of years ago, and then you turn around and you pay VM Consulting to do it again. We have consultants to consult consultants who are consulting consultants, which is absurd. I've never seen anything like it in my life. Um, I think what you need to do is just get it done. Get the signs up, send the letters out, let them know that they got an X amount of time to move the stuff, cut the trees down, put, put it back to the way they found it, or they're gonna face a fine. Simple as that.
So we're at that point now. So what we'll do is next week, start sending out these letters. And for your, um, perspective, just be aware that the letters will be going out, people will be aware of it. There may be some concerns expressed about them receiving these letters and how it would impact their property.
Let me, let me explain something to you. I, I bought a house in New Hampshire several years ago. It had a right of way through it, okay? And I had some neighbors say, oh, we gotta get rid of the right of way, we have to do this, we have to do that. And I just said, you know something? I bought the house knowing there was a right of way there. There's a, there's a road, it's a ten-foot right of way. Why would I complain about it? If I was gonna complain about it, it's, it's, it's their tough luck. It's their tough luck. If they, if they feel the need to take over a right of way, then that's their problem. The right of way's there, our forefathers set them up that way so people could access the beach, alright? Or cut through someone's yard. That's why Little Nahat's the way it is. That's why they have town steps. And again, that was, you got people up there taking those over, alright? Um, so, and, and to me, the whole thing is, get it done. If they don't like it, it's too bad. They knew it when they bought the house. End of story. And I wanna, I'd like to have, uh, a, a report from VM Consulting. I wanna know why we hired, I don't, I understand why we keep hiring people to do this stuff that, first of all, the planning board does a great job, and that, that, and they have done it. They, they have already done it. So, I don't understand why we had to spend thousands of dollars of CPC money and then thousands of dollars with the Open Space Master Plan, which never materialized. I don't understand why we, 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 we do this, why we spend money on ridiculous things. It's beyond me. So, I would just say get it done, and, and-
So this goes out, uh, we'll start Monday.
Okay.
So if you do get calls, that would be what it would be about, so just be aware, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, again, Dan and I will work very closely to make sure we move this along quickly, okay?
You realize, you know, there used to be a pathway all around Nahat.
I know, I heard.
And, I haven't been out there, but people have built over that pathway of their decks in the harbor. And that should be looked into, especially on the backside. And it's, it's like, uh, we used to walk there and the town owned it. And, um, there used to be a pathway all around Little Nahat too.
Yep. Pathway all around Nahat, the whole town.
I understand some of it was a wood, uh-
Wood pathway.
There's a wooden step, yeah, wooden, uh, thing.
It was called the boardwalk.
We should, we should look into that because people, you know, they just, you know, and then they take over these right of ways. They just think, they don't allow anybody to go through it. And we've got people, I know, we've had major problems down there in Tudor Beach. People, with the right of ways, it's just unbelievable. You know, they blocked them up and they won't let anyone through, and, you know, it's just crazy stuff.
Yep.
Okay. So, the letter's gonna go up?
Yeah, it'll go up Monday.
Town administrators report.
You had skipped one item, town council legal settlement.
Dan, you wanna speak on that?
The bank hurt situation?
It's been accepted, so it's, it's not, it's not a secret anymore. Um, am I correct? Yeah, the minutes have been accepted, our minutes have been accepted, but the, the actual statute's up on it, am I correct? Where we can speak about it in open session? Okay. Okay. We discussed this, um, at, at length, and I guess my question is, why did the town get involved in purchasing when I've had a couple of departments had say to me, why, why did they do that? We had no idea any of this was going on, am I right? In the beginning, Richie?
T? Right.
We, we knew nothing of this, okay? And the lawyers, I asked that question, and the lawyers downstairs said, well, we, we kinda wondered why you weren't involved in it. And then we get blindsided with- And then we get blindsided with that we have to buy an annuity. Then we, okay, I did, very reluctantly went along with it. Then we get to the point where we have a separate special executive session meeting here, after a couple, maybe a month ago, and we accepted the minutes, where you had suggested that we don't get involved in it, because just for the, how it was explained to me was liability to the town. So, what, you're gonna have to wait, I'm not finished, alright? So, we rescinded our vote. The original vote, cause that's how it's done, you have to rescind the vote, okay? And I, if, if the town administrator, our name is not anywhere in these documents. You signed them all, Jeff, which is, so why do you, why do you even bother to have us? Can you, why did you even bother to tell us about it, if you're gonna do all that?
Maybe Dan can explain.
No, he's not gonna explain it until I'm finished, okay? And we rescinded our vote, and we discussed that we should not be running any kind of money through the town as advised by council. It should be strictly handled by the attorney, Mrs. Leonard, I don't know her first name, and then the housing authority. The reason being to protect the town. It was also discussed that the town would not purchase the annuity, and it was the sole responsibility of the housing authority. Mr. Barok called the question to rescind, all in favor unanimous, all by, opposed none. Mr. Barok called the question not to have the town purchase an annuity, and have the housing authority handle it. In favor? All in favor, yes, unanimous, none. Okay, so, those are the minutes, they are a public record. You were not out here, Jeff, you were not here, you were out there, cause you had, you, you were, you were very upset with us that night, if I recall. You were here, and you know something, Dan, you're wrong, alright? We don't wanna buy that annuity, but we have. We've bought the annuity, we own the annuity. It was explained to me by the woman that bought the annuity. Again, another lie, because no one's telling us anything. You're not telling us anything, are you?
Dan told you everything at the executive session.
Listen, you're not telling us anything.
Because Dan explained it to you at the executive session, and you agreed.
The first executive session?
No, the second.
No. What did he explain to me, Jeff, you tell me.
Dan, could you explain?
The, the long shot is this, Enzo, and this is nothing new to you. I had the agreement here, and I gave you a copy of the agreement, and I gave you a copy of the agreement with the highlighted language regarding the annuity. You approved the agreement.
No, no, we never approved it, we never signed it, number one. Number two, Dan, you can't give us something, I've told you this, I've warned you. You can't give us something and have us, expect us to do it in five minutes. You do it all the time, okay?
It's an executive session document.
Bottom line is, no. Again, you did something wrong, and you're gonna have to undo it.
I disagree.
Well, you know something, Jeff, you can disagree as much as you want. But the minutes are a permanent record, and you know something, you better fix it. Somehow, you better fix it. We are not gonna get involved with any of this. You are putting the town at risk, and I've had, I've had this discussion with the accountant, the treasurer collector, and they don't understand how it happened. Even this woman that bought the annuity doesn't understand how any of this happened. We don't understand how any of it happened, we had a bunch of lawyers telling us what to do. We had nothing, we knew nothing of it. Nothing, we knew nothing of, of, of any of it. We found out that we're getting sued, the town was getting sued. Because of something that we didn't do. And I had been trying to correct it for a long time, and I was told to stay away from it, by you.
Really?
Yeah, by you, okay?
Really?
Yes.
I don't remember that, nor do I think that the minutes are accurate, and I've told you that before.
Well, you know something, Jeff, they're permanent record. And you know something, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to accept them. You can, you can, you can think any way you want. But you're wrong, okay?
And I would disagree.
Go right ahead.
Enzo, it should be.
I disagree with the way you handle things, I disagree with the way you handle it, okay? Because you're bamboozling the Board of Selectmen.
It's not true at all.
Well, you are, okay?
Well, let me, let me put into suspense here.
You did a terrible job, Dan.
I understand that's your opinion, I appreciate that. Let's make it very clear, no town money was used in the settlement, it was all insurance money. Let's also make it clear that you saw a copy of the agreement, and you approved it.
Let me see, where's the copy of the agreement?
I, I can give it to you, I can email it to you.
Excuse me, you don't have it with you?
No.
He was actually sent to you, it's in that packet right there.
That's not the packet.
There's a, there's a packet that was given to you tonight.
Uh, I left it up there.
Okay, so.
Okay. You gave, again, it was given to me today. Again, another thing, you're giving it to me, I asked for it, I got it today.
You asked for it yesterday.
Listen, Jeff, this should have been given to the Board of Selectmen a long time ago.
You saw it in executive session.
All four attorneys agreed that the Board of Selectmen should have been part of all of this, and we weren't.
Dan and I are saying as you were.
No, we weren't, no, we weren't. Did you know anything about this, Richie, did you know we were getting sued?
What do you mean, with the, with the housing authority?
Yeah.
No, I didn't know.
Did you know? No.
I didn't know, I didn't know.
So, again, I guess I'm the liar, Jeff, I, I guess it's, I'm mistaken, okay? You don't tell us anything, and that's an issue, okay?
It would help if you didn't have a policy where I can't call you or visit you.
Jeff, you have been down my garage on, that, that happened within a month, because you know something, Jeff?
And spend seven weeks.
I don't wanna get into that with you, okay? I don't wanna get into it. We had a very good relationship where you would come down the garage at any given time, you'd just walk right in, not a problem, okay? Now it's a problem. I told you, email. I want emails, I asked you a question today. Who do they work for in that office? Do they work for the Board of Selectmen, or do they work for the town administrator? No answer. I emailed it to you, are you afraid to, are you afraid to answer me?
When did you email it to me, cause I didn't get that?
Okay, no, you didn't get it. You got all the other ones, but you didn't get that one, alright. Okay, very good, we're gonna move on. Thanks for your time, Dan. Town administrators' report.
Okay, we have the Forty Steps Beach Revetment Project. Last time, we talked about the fact that special counsel was looking to develop an approach to the DEP appeal. And his approach is that he would like to go for a variance. And what he tells you in this letter that you see here as three A, is that there are really two options. The first option is to challenge the findings of the DEP, and basically just challenge their desire to have us use a soft option versus a hard option. The second is to request a variance. He feels the variance is the best alternative, because, thank you, Dan. He feels that variance is the best opportunity, because it's really only an exclusion for government uses. And it has, as you see here in the middle, these three challenges, that if you can meet these challenges, that you can successfully get the variance. And this is also a good tool, Enzo, you had brought this up at the last meeting, that it would be good to get our state and local representatives involved to politically put some pressure on this. This is the best vehicle for that.
Do you think we should probably get the lieutenant governor now for a photo op for this too?
Well, when you look at the bottom, it says here, I expect that an understanding of this engineer that he's working with will be three to four weeks. So, that puts you out to about a November tenth or seventeenth. Once he has that, and he's decided, then that would be the opportunity.
Chip, this is from what's all?
Chip Nylund, yeah. He's our special counsel for environmental matters. And so, what he's saying is by mid-November, we should have this in place, and he'd be ready to come and talk to us. And that's when we would ask the lieutenant governor to get involved. So, this is just an update.
I think I've asked you to, to call us. I mean, I think she, she took the opportunity to have a photo op for, with, with the wharf, which she had nothing to do with, but she, you know, took some pictures down there, so, this is a very important project.
Yes.
I mean, we can lose the whole infrastructure, and just because someone from DEP doesn't like, you know, what it's all about, and I'll say this again. Okay, maybe I, I might have misinterpreted, you know, people might have misinterpreted me at the last meeting, but I can tell you, CZM recommended that they do, and DEP recommended what Northeastern did, and by the way, that was a grant. Northeastern didn't pay for any of that. Most of that was a grant that they got for that, that, that revetment, I found out. So, you know, there was no skin off them. But I can tell you right now, they had a soft engineering there, it lasted about twenty minutes, okay? So, we don't want that, we don't want the road to last twenty minutes, we want the revetment there. And, and that's the end, the end of it. I mean, I don't, I don't know what it's gonna take, but you know something? We need to call in the governor, lieutenant governor, and, and to put pressure on the DEP to do the right thing. Because they're doing the wrong thing, I can tell you that right now. So, I would suggest that you get ahold of lieutenant governor, and you put the pressure on her to get it rolling. Along with town, this council, the special council.
Yeah, so in situations like this, it's best to actually have a specific action that you're requesting of our politicians. And so, what he's developing is that. So, the variance comes to the commissioner, and so the lieutenant governor would speak to the commissioner. And it's not a body like the DEP or FEMA, it's the actual commissioner. So, you get a one-on-one person that's much more effective. So, by, you know, three to four weeks, we'll have a finalized report on that, and then we'll go to the lieutenant governor.
Right, thank you.
You bet. The next item is, we have a open representative for MAPC opportunity, and Allison Ackerman has asked to be appointed. And if you so agree, you have a motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Allison Ackerman to the open position as the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission Representative.
Second.
Okay, nice discussion. Allison's a friend of mine, and she's a, a fine young woman that, they actually moved here a couple of years ago, her and her husband Matt. She's gonna do a great job for us, she's very energetic. She does, I know that she mentioned to me that she'd like to be considered for the planning board also, and there's an open, a couple, two open spaces, isn't there?
Yes.
Okay. On the planning board, so, maybe we can get a letter to her to ask her if she would, is still interested in that. And that would fill one spot, and then there's another spot also available. Again, she's very energetic, good, good kid, and she'll, she's gonna do a great job. She's gonna do a great job for the whole town, I can tell you that right now. She's, you know, she's very enthusiastic about living in the heart. So, that's my discussion, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
What's that?
Appointing her.
Yeah, I, we, I voted second, yeah, I'd say.
Alright, but I'm asking you to vote on it now.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
So, Enzo, would you like me to talk to the planning board about doing a joint meeting? Cause I think it's a great idea, they, they need the positions.
Yeah, there's two available, so, if there's anybody else, they should really send a letter in.
Yeah.
And send a letter into the planning board, and get, get rolling. And I can actually call Allison and let her know that she should probably send them a letter, and she might have already done that, I don't know.
Yeah, if you could call her, that'd be great, and I'll just launch off of that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Winter parking?
Okay. That is the inclusion of that, okay?
Winter parking, right here.
Winter parking ban. Richie? Anything you wanna add to the winter parking ban?
Yeah, I, I asked the ice beyond that. This is the information sheet I'm, I'm reading from the police chief?
Yeah, this is what, what we go out, send out to the public each year.
Well, I mean, the idea of, you know, when there's snow coming in, I would put snow and ice.
Okay.
Cause you gotta add, I mean, the problem is, we've had more ice storms than snowstorms, and I'm afraid that the public works when they're laying down the salt, they can't, they hit vehicles, they gotta get them off the street so that the, the street is covered with salt. So, that's the biggest thing. And I increased the fine too.
Well, we. We should talk about that.
Well, I'm just, someone asked me, I'm, I'm just, you know.
I'm with you.
I wish you'd start, I wish you'd start asking you first, and I'll go behind you, alright? Cause you keep saying, gee, I'm new here, but you haven't, you've been here for a while.
Gee, I'm new here.
You know, you, I'm gonna start saying, well, I'm old here, and I'm gonna go last.
I was just gonna start, my theory is, I'm new here, but.
I think we should limit.
If I may. I still can't understand why there's a parking ban when it's seventy degrees and I'm golfing in January. Why you have to then take your car off the street? I still would like to see some of those blue lights that I see in Swambska, Salem, and everyone says, oh, it's blue lights, it's gonna snow, we should get the car off the road. I know every year, I know this has been, years back, it's been a thorn for the selectmen, so, but at some point, I'd like us to discuss that.
Put blue lights up on a telephone pole, isn't it?
We, we could do it now, I mean, we, you got the one entrance to the town, and it covers Little Nahat, and big town, I would just get a light, you know? And then I'd get a blue light that would flash or something, you know, make it, make it, you know, snow emergency.
I've got it.
You, you, oh, then you.
No, wait, I've got the answer.
As I agree with you.
You'll love this one.
Okay.
We'll take blue lights, and we'll put them on the drone.
On the drone?
It'll probably wave.
Fly it all the time.
Why'd you bring up the drone? You know, why'd you bring up the drone?
I'm sorry, I couldn't help you.
Anyway, I, I, I just say.
It's just a thought, I, I.
I, I, I agree with you, I think because you're right.
Mr. Chairman, I take it back all my time.
I just got, I got a mild, I just heard we're gonna have a mild winter, and I think why put the, even the parking ban on? Because especially Little Nahat and Bass Point, people, you know, they jock in, and I don't know, I, I.
My kids go over to Little Nahat, for instance, they know some people, they go over, they have a few brews and stuff, cause our kids are older. They come out and they get a ticket.
Yeah.
And it's like forty degrees or fifty degrees.
Yeah.
Cause they, they stay there till one o'clock.
Oh, what do you mean?
And the police are doing what's right, but it's, nah.
Well, I mean, we could, we could change it, but the problem is, the problem is, it's, it's just, it's the public works that suffers, that's the problem. If, if we do have a quick snowstorm or something.
You can't park, you can't fly, so.
You know, it's a catch twenty-two, I, the winter parking ban goes in with December twenty-first.
Yes.
I mean, we could, we could delay that, I mean, just use it, you know, just, I don't know, I mean.
I, I don't know the answer, but it's just something that, I see it all the time, cause I go to Salem.
We don't know, you don't know if we're gonna have a, a mild winter, they, they say.
No, I don't know, I don't know that at all, no.
I mean, we do, so we can get the, the wharf can get done, but we don't know that we're gonna.
Where do they put the cars during the parking ban, when we decide to go through the parking ban?
Well, again, they, you know.
They put them in the school, school parking lot, that's one.
And they have to be out by a certain time.
What about Little Nahat, where do they put them, down at Tides or?
Again, you can't, there's people up there that have driveways that are complaining that they can't, there's too many. You see, I'm on the opposite side of the fence, I'm hearing that there's too many cars being, you know, there's three or four cars parked in the street.
Well, that's, that's an illegal parking, you, you know that.
Right.
When you see three or four cars.
We gotta help those people out that are, that are complaining too, we gotta think of both, I think.
And what, you don't have the ban?
No, 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 I, I think we should have the ban.
Yeah.
Limit the amount of cars that we can, you know, for the winter, the parking.
Stickers there?
Oh, you're saying that these people.
Oh, the winter parking stickers.
And stay up. Right, that they, a parking waiver, I mean, there might be one or two per household instead of three or four.
But why do, why are they giving out? If people are complaining.
They've always got different circumstances.
On Willow Road, on Willow Road, and there's houses there with no parking at all. They have no parking, they have to park out front. And they have the, by the, they buy the winter parking, so they, they have, they, you know, they, they park out there. When the snow comes, or coming, they put it somewhere, okay? I don't know where they, they put it. And that's why it's just, you know, that's why they buy the winter parking, you know?
Right.
They don't have to get the car out of the, off the street, and if it's a mild winter, that winter parking ban kinda take care of that. I mean, they can leave it in the street with the, with the winter parking ban sticker, with a winter sticker.
So, we need to, I think we should, we should restrict how many per household to.
Well, I mean, it could be kids coming home from college.
Oh, sure.
It could be two or three kids.
But they can call the police, you know, I mean, I think the police, you know. See, look, I mean, I've, I've had cars break down, Richie, and I'll, I'll call the police, and I'll say, look, there's a car parked out there, I can't push it by myself.
Yeah.
And they, they, they leave it, they don't bother.
Well, no, I, they, they, the police are very good, I.
You need, you need, people need to let them know that if there's a problem.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I don't, I, I think the winter, the parking, winter parking stickers are great, especially if we don't get snow. I mean, they don't, no one has to move a car. I mean, they park out where, where they do now, as in the summer, and during the winter. I mean, the blue light's a good idea, that's, we could put that up, I, or whatever, green, whatever, I don't care what. There's only gonna be one light out there, cover Little Nahat, and, you know, they're coming into town, so they see it, and oh my God, it's, we get the car off the street, the winter ban is going to effect at midnight or something.
So, do you wanna? So, do you wanna?
Oh, the chairman declares a snow emergency.
Yeah.
Which you have to do this year.
Yeah. I can, uh, yeah, I heard that too. I got, I got a, a radio at the house now.
So, do you want me to look into the price of the blue light?
That's good, your, your chairman should have a radio. You should have a radio in your car.
Yeah. But I.
That's all we need.
I concur with you, Richie, that the thirty-dollar non-refundable application fee is too low.
Yeah.
It's way too low. Thirty dollars might have been fined five or ten years ago.
Oh, yeah, I just, well, I, I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the cost of the sticker is and how much manpower. Now, they get these from the police chief, but.
I'm thinking, I mean, the police have to go up there, it costs them to send a guy up there to look at the, the area and where they're gonna park and, so it takes time and, and the police are making.
But the other, the other, the superintendent of public works?
Yeah.
No, I, I just think we just, instead of just snow, I just want to add ice.
Okay.
Because they had more ice storms.
Yeah.
Am I right, Dennis, on that? I just, you know, for some reason I heard, they dropped a note and put it on my windshield. For some reason I got a bulletin board down there, I get the notes, that's where I get all my information.
Okay, so we can, wanna table that to the?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay.
We'll actually have the police chief here next meeting, you wanna talk, you wanna talk about it then?
Yeah, yeah, in, in case we wanna go up in the.
Well, Dennis is here now, you wanna ask Dennis, I mean, Dennis, you're the other one there, you, you're, it's your team, still plowing.
And, 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 you know, solving, so.
Winter parking ban?
Unfortunately, it's up to Mother Nature here, I mean, we can't, we can't forecast. But I, I don't have, well, to, to T's point, you know, I, I somewhat agree with you. Um, if, if the weather is, is appropriate, people should be allowed to park. The problem is, uh, the weather turns overnight and then they get the word out, um, can be a, a, a challenge for the police as well as us. So, pick a date and let's move on.
Okay. We can vote on it if you want.
I'm, yeah, I'm fine, I'm ready to go, yeah.
Okay.
Just add the word ice, snow and/or ice storm.
Okay, I'm taking a motion that we accept the winter parking ban as follows. Um, and to add ice, went, you know, with the snow.
Well, no, uh, uh, you know, uh, snow and/or ice storm.
Snow and/or ice storm, cars must be taken off the, off the, and people have to realize that they, you know, the winter parking stickers doesn't give them the right to leave their car on the street during a snow and ice storm, they have to get them off the street, period.
And I, I would also, I don't know, I like T's idea if you wanna put a.
Get some of those lights, we could probably put one in, uh, on Flash Road in front of his house. T's house.
No, I'm talking, no, I'm serious, I.
No, you're right.
It's a good, it's a good idea.
It is.
I mean, just at the entrance to town, on the light pole or something, you know, it just, uh, I don't know how you turn it on or off, I don't know who does that.
Police would do that. All right, they can be.
Remotely, they can do it remotely.
Right.
They can, well, the police would be the ones, because they're the ones that would, uh, if there's ice, they're responsible to call out the public works, am I correct?
Right. And, and also, we could do it as a test.
Yeah.
Pass whatever we're gonna do tonight and then, gee, what did you think about the light to?
Yeah.
Because everyone talks, everyone calls us up for anything anyway. So, I mean.
I think it's a great idea.
Just as a test.
Just in case, you know, they don't get the message or the word.
They'll go, oh, there's that light, that means I gotta move my car.
Yeah, if it's in the street, yeah.
Yeah.
Since the chief is gonna be here the next meeting and we do have time, do you mind if we just move this the next meeting and have him come and talk with it? Because I think he would be, uh, very informative.
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, I just, I wanna add one thing, um, we had a green community meeting, we, and people know that we've already started that. We actually have a member here tonight, Nick Broklin. And him and I are gonna work on, um, trying to get a grant to purchase the streetlights for the town. We're getting prices now, am I right?
Yes.
For the, uh, actual purchase of the streetlights, there's a grant out there available. Nick's done extensive work on it, he's done a great job. We have a great committee, Diane Montez is heading it up, uh, she's, she's the chairman. And, um, I'm very impressed with her, she's, you know, and it, and it's nice to sit down and watch these guys really work because they're very dedicated to the town and, and making this thing work. I mean, I just can't, it's really, it's something to watch, how, how, how good everybody's working together on this. And, and I'm, I'm really impressed. And we got a guy from Swampscott that comes here, Neil Duffy, who's the coordinator, Northeast Region Coordinator, uh, for the green communities. And he's dedicated, I mean, this guy comes to Nahant just to come to our meetings, to let us know what to do next and how to do it. And we're gonna put some stuff up on the website. That's gonna talk about the stretch code. The, the stretch code is what we're gonna have, we're gonna have to adopt at town meeting. And it's basically, I mean, the stretch code and the base code are pretty much similar to, uh, and it's, it's the building code. The stretch code has, uh, the, um, requires a couple of extra things and that's it. It's, uh, it's not too far away from the, the base code, uh, and it only, it's only works under, uh, with three thousand square foot homes or bigger and for new construction, which we don't have much of that in the hut anymore, so, um, it's, it's a good deal. We're gonna try to educate people on that so we can get that passed through the town meeting. And it's actually a good thing, I've talked to some contractors about it, um, it's a, you bring in the HERS people that, uh, um, that's, which is the, um, they, they check the house to make sure that, that, the, the design, they check the insulation and they do a, a rating. They have a rating system where they, they go through the whole house before, in the middle, and at the very end to make sure it's HERS rated, am I correct, Nick? And they make sure that the house is correctly built and they give you guidelines and you have to follow them. And, you know, it's a, it's a good deal for people that are building a house because, um, they get the benefit of, uh, better energies, you know, energy savings, uh, you know, lights, uh, you know, electricity, heat, all of it. So, these houses, they're, they're so tight, they have to vent the roofs, I think, that they're so tight. And it's up to this person to look over the whole project, am I, uh, if I'm correct? So, we're gonna get that out there to, to adopt that, we're gonna write an article for the, the town meeting. And I just wanna say thank you to my, uh, to that committee, they're doing a great job. And Nick, uh, Nick's doing a great job and we're gonna work together on that, getting that, that grant going, right?
Terrific. Terrific. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could we take executive session and move it to next meeting? So, we're over two hours.
Okay.
Into this meeting.
It, it's not time sensitive.
I am.
No, no, the executive session.
Okay.
Richie? On the executive session, um, I don't think we're prepared to go into executive session to discuss strategy on the, um.
Contracts.